Meeting of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, it is five thirty P M. Madam thirty, let's start over. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Councilmember Venable.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan.
Here.
Mayor Bieber.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any public comment regarding the closed session?
No comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're gonna get this party started. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to open the Regular City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Meeting of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is six oh two P M., and at this time, I'd like to ask our Sheriff's Captain, Captain Walker, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Councilmember Venable.
Here.
Mayor Protime Duncan.
Here.
Mayor Bieber.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. No items to report out of closed session today.
Thank you. Moves us on to special presentations. First presentation will be by Yaps. Hope I see two puppies in the back of the room.
I came armed.
It's a good indication that you're from Yaps.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Krista Dunlop. I'm the Executive Director at Yaps. Oh, I can go right there. Sorry. Ugh, good, I got armrests. Can everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Uh, so I'm the Executive Director at Ukaypa Animal Placement Society. I do have a lovely update, since we are a nonprofit dog and cat rescue. Taro, that was here with us last time, that beautiful lab mix, did find a foster to adopt this past weekend with a lovely woman who has sent me pictures every couple hours of him on his new adventures.
Yes.
So we are expecting a foster fail, as we love to call it, where he is not coming back to Yaps. So that's great. He's been with us for over a year, so it's a really big win for a dog like him to find a place. Today, I have this pile of cuteness. This is Buffy and her brother Socks. These two babies were found abandoned in Awash in Ukaypa at just six weeks old. They were both covered in fleas and ticks and all the nasty stuff. A very kind woman fostered them until they were old enough to come to Yaps, and they get to go up for adoption this weekend. They are dachshund mixes, so little wiener dog mixes. We unfortunately don't know what kind of dog they're mixed with, other than it's cute. So we call these guys Heinz fifty-sevens. We specialize with those at Yaps. We're big fans of the mutts. And for those that don't know us, we're a local rescue right down the road by Ukaypa High School. We're open Thursday to Saturday from twelve P M. to four P M., and we adopt out dogs and cats that have been orphaned from either needing a home from the shelter or from owners who could no longer care for them. So that's how we get this cuteness in our hands that we get adopted. So thanks for letting us be here tonight.
Can we, uh, can we get a picture with you and these two dogs out here and see if we can get them, find them homes?
Do you want me to come up there?
We'll come down right over here.
I promise I'll get the hang of it. Does anyone want to hold the pile of cuteness? She's vicious. Anybody else wanna hold this? Any takers? That's the Socks.
Tuck in is better for the photo when you guys are tucked in. There you go.
He's a little more shy. She is not. She's too blonde.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, next week, your next name, uh, they're in homes.
Yeah, that's the plan. Thanks, guys.
Maybe the city can adopt them. We can have some, uh, some support dogs up here to help us out through those long meetings. How do you think? Yeah, there'd be dogs up here. All right. I would like to call up Chancellor Diana Rodriguez from the San Bernardino County Community College District for the next special presentation.
Thank you. I have to tell you, though, that is a hard act to follow.
You didn't bring puppies?
I have to bring that lineup. No, they were adorable, adorable. Good evening, then. Thank you for having me here today. I appreciate it. Now, as introduced, my name's Diana Rodriguez, the Chancellor of the San Bernardino Community College District. I've been the Chancellor there for the past three years. Prior to that, I was President at San Bernardino Valley College. And our district houses not only San Bernardino Valley College, but also Crafton Hills College, right here in Ukaypa, along with K B C R radio and television station. How many of you here are alums or past students of?
Oh, just me?
I see I'm in good company.
Oh, Crafton? That's good, see.
Actually, that counts, Crafton. So fantastic. So when, I wanted to talk a little bit today with the council about the impact that our district is making on our communities around us. And when we talk about the impact, I'm happy to share some updates with you. But before I do that, I want to share with you a video that I think really captures who we are within the San Bernardino Community College District. And Inez, my colleague, is gonna help with the PowerPoint here. Thank you. I just love this video. I think it really highlights who we are and what we've been doing for almost one hundred years in our community. In a couple of years, we will be celebrating our one hundredth birthday. And so who are we? I think it's important for you to see the faces of our district. Here on the slide, you'll see all of our Board of Trustees and our Presidents of our institutions, along with our student trustees. I won't introduce them all to you, but I do want to point out our Board Chair, Dr. Stephanie Houston, who is a resident of Ukaypa. And also, I think you all know the President of Crafton Hills College, Dr. Kevin Herant, who apologizes that he couldn't be here this evening. So the, also, we have Dr. Linda Fontanella, our interim President at, um, at Valley College, who also reaches out to this community to promote some of the classes and the courses that we have at Valley College as well. Who we serve in the community. If you take a look at this slide, it highlights where our twenty-three thousand students across our district come from. We service twenty-two different cities and communities here within our area. Seven feeder districts. I won't name them all, but you can see them listed there. And our span is across over four million people through K B C R. We like to say that all four million people are potential students for our district. As you, as you listen to it, you'll hear the tagline where you learn something every day. So hopefully, you have a chance to, to tune in to K B C R. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the affordability of our institution. As you can see, attending Crafton Hills College or San Bernardino Valley College, you get a huge bang for your buck there. It costs approximately thirteen hundred dollars to attend for a full year at one of our institutions. When you compare that to the C S U or the U C system, which would cost you about fourteen thousand dollars, not to mention the private institutions, which could cost upwards of forty-five thousand dollars. And a two-year degree at our institution is the equivalent of the first two years at a C S U or a U C system. So as you can see, it gives a tremendous value to our students here, right here in the inland empire. You know, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is reducing the barriers for our students to attend school. And we know that the financial barrier is probably the biggest hurdle that our students have. And one of those hurdles of going to school are books. So three years ago, we implemented what we call Books Plus. And what that is, is that's a program where we will offer to any student that comes to us at either of our campuses, free books and materials. It doesn't matter if you're taking one unit or twenty units, if you are with another program within the institution or not. Your income level does not matter. We just want you to know that we want you at one of our institutions, and we're gonna help break down those barriers through Books Plus and offer free books. Now, we're doing this with one-time state dollars, and so we're aware of that. We are in the process of seeing how, how can we continue these efforts? But in the meantime, we want every person that is interested in going to school to take advantage of this program of Books Plus. Also, we support our community service through what we call the College Court Program. This is another statewide program where we are offering for a hundred students across our district the opportunity to work with nonprofit organizations. They volunteer their time with those organizations, and we pay them. So they get a monthly check, which at the end of the year could equate to about ten thousand dollars for them, which they can use for school expenses or just life expenses of going to school. And we believe what they're learning is not only, you know, hands-on experience, but also giving back to the community, which is serving them as well. So we're really proud of this program and all of the students that are participating. So if you know of a nonprofit, much like Yaps, who could use another set of hands to help with whatever, please reach out to us, and we're happy to connect with a qualified student to help support the programs. We also offer local training in career services through, throughout our programs. This next video highlights two buildings that we're gonna be opening up, one on each campus. And I couldn't be more proud of the folks that put in the work to design these buildings and help bringing it to fruition. So let's take a look at these videos. I couldn't be more excited about these buildings. Now, these projects were funded through Measure C C, a half a billion-dollar, um, projects here. And we're happy to report that through the bond alone has contributed a hundred and sixty-three million dollars to large and small businesses right here in our communities. And that's a priority, not only for myself and my administration, but also for our Board of Trustees. And in fact, to date, we have paid direct fees, wages, to local construction workers, totaling about one point four million dollars. Again, keeping the dollars local to our communities here. We're excited about that. And also, we're careful, we also like to give careful consideration to those who live and work here in our communities and who apply for our projects. The next slide is our Public Safety Training Center Ribbon Cutting Program. We're excited to announce that through the bond here in the city of Ukaypa at the Crafton Hills College Campus, you can see photos of it up on the screen. And we'd like to invite the, um, council here to join us on January twenty-fourth at ten thirty A M. for a ribbon cutting of the Public Safety Training Center. Now, this center here is, um, has a special place for me. All of my brothers are first responders. Many of nieces and nephews are first responders, aunts, uncles, and so on. So I am so excited to see this building come into our community and to be utilized to train more, uh, first responders. And we'll be sure to get a formal invitation out to all of you. And all of those in the audience who wish to, uh, wish to join us, you are certainly welcome as well. Lastly, I want to share with you is the work of, um, K B C R, our, uh, PBS and M P R radio station. And it is also the home of, um, F N X, the First Nations Experience. It is the only Native American and, um, world indigenous channel in the United States. And we're pretty proud to be hosting that within our radio station. It is again housed at, um, San Bernardino Valley College Campus, but we would like to invite you to come take a tour of our center and see what we have to offer. We'd also like to put you on air if you would like to talk about all of the fantastic things that are happening right here in the city of Ukaypa. So we hope that you will take us up on that. And then I think I am probably just about out of time here, but I want to thank you for having myself and my colleagues here, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. And we look forward to giving you a tour, not only at K B C R, but to any of our colleges. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Is there any questions of our presentation?
Is there any questions of our presenter?
Yeah, maybe you can join us at our Youth Advisory Committee. I mean, we'd love to have you there because that's where, you know, everybody gets started, you know, in the community and stuff, and that'd be a great way to, for you to, you know, promote the colleges and everything like that, so.
No, we would love, we would love to be there.
They're every, was it first and third? First, first and third Wednesday, 6 o'clock, right in that room right behind us?
First and third, 6 p.m.
And then the young lady right behind you, she might have a card, and you can email her and make that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you for the invitation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Thorpe? No?
No, we have our picture taken with it.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We would like to get a picture with you for this presentation. I, I did attend Crafton right out of high school, the Harvard on the Hill, as we called it. And it used to be covered in ivy, so we can tell people we went to an Ivy League school. I think you cleaned some of the ivy off.
There you go.
And then, of course, the Frank Bland Regional Training Center, which partners with Valley College for the credits there, for the college credits, I know myself and certainly Councilman Thorpe are alum from, from that realm. So great work you folks are doing to help brighten the future of the region with all the youngsters here. And it's not even youngsters. I think I've known quite a few of my relatives who've been there later on in life to advance their education. So thank you so much for that. We'll come down here and get our picture with you, if it's okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. That moves us on to public comment. If there are speakers that would like to speak, please fill out a form in the back of the room. They look like this. Hand it to our city clerk over here to my left. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak on any, any item or just general public comment. So the first speaker, and forgive me if I mispronounce, Kim Kaloka Madden, followed by Jova Seabody, I believe.
Do I just go ahead and, oh, now I see.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Kim Kaloka Madden, a Ucaipa resident of 10 years. I've come here today to help raise awareness about what might be one of the most important moments in our nation's history. I'd like to start with an excerpt from Pastor Martin Niemoller's poem, "First They Came." It reminds us that speaking out is crucial when atrocities occur. "First they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." I share this quote to highlight the power of awareness to change, as Niemoller was on the side of the oppressor until he experienced firsthand the conditions inside a concentration camp. Until last month, I believed we had learned from history and that atrocities like these would never happen again. However, recent events have shattered that belief. In just 36 days, 253 schools, 71 mosques, three churches, 56 ambulances, and 22 hospitals have been bombed. As a result of these airstrikes, 11,000 innocent lives have been lost, including those of over 4,000 children. Regardless of our affiliations, I'm sure that we can all agree that children should never be bombed. Children who do survive bombings are undergoing amputations and treatment of third and fourth degree burns without anesthetic and without antiseptic. Over the weekend, three premature babies died, and more are soon to follow as Al-Shifa Hospital has no oxygen or electricity to sustain their incubators. I'm not here to debate why this conflict started or the politics of it. I'm here to address the ongoing tragedy, a relentless bombing campaign, cutoffs of basic necessities like food, water, fuel, and most importantly, the unimaginable suffering of children. As a mother and a human, I implore you to demand a ceasefire. Some might not be fully aware of the situation, but today I hope to change that. Your voices matter. Call your representatives, sign petitions, and support boycotts to make a difference. We must speak out for the Palestinian people. While this issue may not directly impact our city, we have an opportunity to make a stand. Please do what is in your power to denounce the war crimes verified by Amnesty International, Doctors Without Borders, and other honorable organizations. I propose that the city of Ucaipa consider a symbolic resolution in support of a desperately needed ceasefire, de-escalation, and call to respect for international law. Following the footsteps of cities like Richmond and Cudahy, California, we too can demand a ceasefire. Let's put Ucaipa on the map as a city full of good people who refuse to be silent while innocent children suffer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Jova, I believe it's Seabody? Please, Peabody, followed by Mr. Caesar Roldan.
Good evening. I'm just bringing up that my questions still have not been answered regarding Ordinance 425 and its 344 amendment, and they are summed up as follows. 925-23 questions. In addition to various moving costs, whether things will be considered in relocation? Two, what happens to the relocated person if the rent after first month isn't affordable or it gets raised so it cannot be paid? Three, what procedures will be used to verify there are no changes to the property being sold that might affect the environment with a new multipurpose project? Questions from 1023-23, which have not been answered. At what point does Ordinance 429 trigger? At what point do mobile home tenants such owners get first notice there is interest in purchasing the land on which they live? Number two, it was stated at the 925-23 meeting that an investor must buy everyone's coach at market value. Where does it say that? In the Ucaipa Housing Element, Ordinance 429, with its addendum, other law, or even the California MRL? Number three, if converting moment home properties are cost prohibitive, never going to happen, why does Ordinance 429 exist in the first place? Let the folks 50 years from now deal with such things if they need comes up. If it is never going to happen and is cost prohibited, then why isn't the ordinance and addendums repealed and taken off the books? Number four, where does it discuss in Ordinance 429 that it also applies to disasters? Number five, it was noted at the 529-23 meeting that quarterly mobile home inspections want to be implemented by various levels of government. Please explain why you are targeting mobile homes for quarterly and multiple agency inspections and not for non-mobile homes. Please provide answers to my questions by the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caesar Roldan, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Good evening, Steve members. Caesar Roldan, Pendleton Road. Tonight, I just stand here before you, not just as a resident, but someone who deeply appreciates you guys. We deeply appreciate all the work that you do for our community. In the hustle of the daily governance, there's a profound impact in your decisions that sometimes go unsung. But today, I want to ensure you that your efforts are recognized and they are celebrated. Your roles are pivotal, and while it may sometimes seem that it's a thankless job, please know that there is a majority who see and value your dedication. The voices of dissatisfaction may echo loudly at times, but they do not represent all of us. Many of us understand the complexity and weight of your decision, that, of the decisions that you make, and we stand with you in some of these challenging times. I'm reminded of a passage of the Bible, Romans 13:1, that says, "Let's let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." This verse speaks of the belief that the position that, the position of leadership that you have is not by chance, but is by divine placement. As I reflect on this, and like always, I like to pray for you guys and dedicate a prayer for you guys. Heavenly Father, I come before you to lift up these leaders you have appointed. Grant them the wisdom, courage, and discernment as they navigate this intricate of governing of our beloved city. We are reminded of Esther, who was placed by you for such a time as this. May our council members feel the same sense of purpose and calling in their roles. We pray for their well-being, their strength in adversity, and for clarity in decision-making. May they always be guided by your Spirit in shaping the future of our community. Amen. In closing, I want to express my deepest gratitude for each and every one of you. Your work does not go unnoticed, and it is deeply appreciated. And on behalf of those who may not speak up often, but share the same sentiment, thank you for all that you do for our cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mr. Bill, forgive me, Tilbury? Perfect.
Hanson Wong, 35150 Court Street, Ucaipa, California. And how do I follow somebody like Caesar? But I will try. So first of all, I, I want to express thanks to the police department for their truncheon treat. And there's somewhere between 600 and 1,000, but I can't exactly place how many there were there. But I can tell you, there were a lot of happy children, children in costumes, and children who got their face painted, and I'm going to run out of time. I want to also thank, well, we had the Make a Difference Day, and that worked out well. There's nothing like seeing one of the council members, Mr. Venable, that was out there digging up the weeds and cleaning things up at the senior center. And then, of course, I saw Mayor Pro Tem there coming by and saying hello to us at the senior center as well. So if you have a chance and you're not working next year, please come out and support. And the youth advisory, where it's awesome, the fire department, the, everything that went along was fine. If you're ever out at the Five Winds, you'll see the snake that was made out there by a lot of the kids. So, and then, in addition, any of the people in the city that are veterans, want to thank them for their service, and I'm grateful for what they do. And so I will give you guys a minute and 20 seconds.
Thank you, doctor. Bill, sir? And then, followed by Mrs. Donna Snodgrass.
Good evening, councilmen. Bill Tilbury at 11773 Peachtree. Caesar stole my pom-poms, so, but I wanted to say pretty much the same thing. I appreciate what you guys have been doing. I think you guys have been doing a job that's awfully hard to do, and I think you've done it with honor and truthfulness, and that's all somebody can ask for. I know in the past, we've had disagreements, and I've had misunderstandings about some of the things that went on. But all in all, I got to say, I'm proud to say I lived in the city of Ucaipa and that you gentlemen are leading the way. So, thank you. And I'm sorry about the outburst, but that was just too easy to throw that, that joke in. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
This is Donna Snodgrass.
Donna Snodgrass, Walnut Grove Court. Honorable mayor and council members. Gentlemen, despite the pressure you've been under this past year, I think you've done a good job. I've had some differences on a few things, but we were able to sit down and talk, something that is sorely lacking. I even had a phone fight with the city manager, and after our tempers cooled down a little bit, Chris Mann called, and we set up a meeting, and we were able to talk and have a better conversation. We've been able to talk with staff, my husband and I, with staff members over different issues, and I can assure you all tonight that they are very happy with the management right now. And I'd like to give a special shout out to Megan. Is she here tonight?
She is.
My friend retired a week ago and came down here to spend her first week of retirement with us, and we bought tickets to the matinee show of Man of La Mancha. That's one of my favorite musicals of all time. The talent being brought to the YPAC is amazing. This production rivaled any professional production of that musical, and I've seen it several times in many different venues. It literally brought me to tears. And she booked the Dream Boats for the Winter Fest. If you've never been a swing dancer or involved in that culture, this is one of the most popular swing dance bands in California. There are dancers from the Pasadena Ballroom Association that literally follow these, this band around, and they watch their schedule so they could show up at every performance that this band is at. So I don't know how she did it, because I know they're booked solid, but I want to thank Megan for her work at the YPAC and the other things in Ucaipa, and I also want to thank you gentlemen for your efforts for this whole year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Seeing no more public comment, with the exception of the agendaized item comments, we will move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening consists of agenda items 1 through 12. Is there any member of the council that would like to pull a item for further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion with the understanding that I will have to recuse myself from voting on item number two, as for my previous recusal when the item was heard. So, and actually, I do want to have a staff report on item number five, please. The local emergency due to Tropical Storm Hillary. So I'll call that after, as the first department report, if that's okay. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Venable?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, 1 through 12, with the exception of five, carries, and my recusal for two. Is that clear? Is that clear as mud? Sorry about that. All right. Mayor and council member business reports. Is there any member of the council that has any business to report?
Yeah, we got Turkey Trot coming up on Thursday.
Right, we sure do. Doctor, are you going to be there?
No.
What? Oh my goodness. I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there with the Turkey Trot this year.
Turkey Trot, and then we have the Winter Fest right after that, right? On that Saturday? So.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Good stuff coming up. I really appreciate the work that the Health of Ucaipa Committee is putting out. All right. So let's move on to department reports. Can we do number five real quick regarding, I guess what I'm looking for is, it was, I know it was discussed for the state of the city. Where are we at as it relates to repairs? I know some information was requested of the federal government for reimbursement. Can you kind of give us a little bit heads up on that?
Yes, sir. First, pardon my jacket. I'm apparently temperature sensitive. It's freezing in here.
Yeah.
So.
It is cold in here.
So regarding item number five, the staff report for the extension of a local emergency for Tropical Storm Hillary, we are pending some sort of notification from Cal OES and FEMA as to whether, thank you, as to whether our California disaster assistance request has been accepted or not. So pending that, we're going to continue with the local emergency. We're going to request continuance of the local emergency until we hear something. Once we do hear something, we actually still hope to continue local emergency, which will allow us to complete the work in a more timely measure.
Understood. And Chief Malinowski, are we concerned with this week's storm event? I know it's forecast is calling for some sustained rains over the course of a few days. How does our infrastructure damage hold? Are we anticipating it's going to hold up?
So it's too far out right now. These things are kind of finicky, where we got to get that window a little closer, that 48-hour timeout. We're looking at Thursday as the area of concern, and right now, we're forecasting about .6 inches per hour, and not a lot of cumulative rain, so it's, it's fairly well below threshold right now, but we're obviously every day keeping an eye on it, so.
So we'll recommend to anybody who's listening, and I know we've done such a good job in the past of pushing out that, that warning. I hope we don't have to do any evacuation warnings or orders, but certainly you'll be working with the Sheriff's Department to make sure we're getting that. we're getting that information out well in advance, so that we can be prepared as possible.
Absolutely. So we always have the 48, 24, 12 goals. So 48 evac warning, 24 evac order, 12 is our road closures, staking K rails in our pron areas like Oakland and Potato Canyon, stuff like that.
So I'm gonna keep requesting these items be pulled probably as we anticipate forecasted rain. I think it's important we talk about it. Obviously, the experts who study our climate are calling for a pretty wet winter with the forecast. So I'm obviously concerned following what we just experienced, making sure that we are as prepared as possible and that our north bench is as prepared as we can be. So thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there a motion to approve item number 5?
I'll move approval of item number 5 in the Consent Agenda.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Duncan.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you for allowing that to go through. Item number 13, new state housing law update. This is gonna be presented by our city attorney, Mr. Stephen Graham.
Thank you, mayor. Before I begin, I did note that we had public comments. I'd asked that we call them at this time, so perhaps I can answer their questions during the presentation.
Perfect. We do have two public comment speaker slips on item number 13. If you have not yet submitted your public speaker comment slip, go ahead and give it to our city clerk. First speaker, Dr. Hanson Wong. Second speaker, Mrs. Donna Snodgrass.
Hanson Wong, 35150 Court Street, Yucaipa, California. And so, in a way, we're gonna get educated, I presume, by, oh, by, okay. And the only comment I have to make is, there are a lot of things that come down from the state, and it takes away some of our rights as a city for how we want to develop land and watch our city grow and so on. And there are other cities that are pushing back somewhat. I'm not saying to get ourselves in trouble, but I am saying to think about some pushback to try and maintain some governance of our own city and its land. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Mrs. Donna Snodgrass?
Not Donna Snodgrass, Walnut Grove. I didn't have a comment so much as questions on some of the items. Can I delay until afterwards, because my questions may be answered? Or should I ask them now, and then, when you get there, can I answer?
But it's easier for me if you ask them now, because I'll make sure to loop them in.
So on page 20 of the PowerPoint, where it says other laws, you're talking about AB 1449, the Affordable Housing SEQA exemption for legislative acts and general plan amendments. Will this apply to other than affordable housing? And will it be circumvented by doing the agriculture easements that we're talking about for conservation and covenants on the land?
Forgive me, you said that was, you said page 20, or?
I'm sorry, slide 20.
Slide 20.
Yeah. Slide 26, AB 1033. I think there might be a typo. It says local agencies, that is a typo? Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Slide 27, the owner occupancy for AB 976. This is for ADUs, I believe. Does this new law allow a builder to include an ADU upfront when they're doing the development, and then sell the property with both living units already built, allowing the buyer to do an immediate lot split and sell the ADU? Slide number 30, AB 439. The comments there, is that referencing SEQA? Where it talks about this law is similar to an anti-slap law. Is that, are we referring to the SEQA? And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll get those questions answered to this presentation. No further speaker slips on item number 13? Correct, okay. Mr. Graham, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. So this is going to hopefully be a regular practice of ours here. I know that every jurisdiction throughout the state is very interested in the constant changes to housing law as the legislature attempts to resolve the lack of housing and the lack of affordable housing in our state through a constant erosion of local jurisdictions' ability to control their land use and environmental review. There are no, I would say, groundbreaking changes to housing law this year. These are incremental changes in six categories that we'll be talking about. But if you had heard my previous presentations in previous years, which of course you haven't, this is your first year listening to this, you would have heard me tell you that incremental changes from the legislature are as important as the groundbreaking changes, for two reasons. The first is, it shows you where the legislature is going. The legislature rarely stops at small incremental changes to the laws. Oftentimes, that's where they build consensus, and then next year, they move it a little bit further, and the next year, they move it a little further beyond that. Some might call that boiling the frog slowly. The other thing is that it usually sets up the larger shifts. So when you see them removing labor provisions from project streamlining, which we'll talk about in one of the bills, they'll do it in a small scale. And you may say to yourself, well, that's not gonna have a very large effect. But then, perhaps, in a future cycle, that has changed the dynamics when it comes to those labor provisions, and they might remove it on a bigger category of projects. Those labor provisions tend to be the thing that holds a lot of these laws back from being implemented on a broad scale. So that's sort of the overall sort of thought process. I do have to have this disclaimer at the beginning of my presentations. This is for informational purposes. This is not legal advice to any member of the community. I serve the city of Yucaipa, they are my client. So what are those categories that we're gonna talk about? We're gonna start with project streamlining. And so this is the ability to modify the approval process for housing projects in the state of California, typically by making them ministerially approved. I'm gonna use a lot of technical language. I know a lot of the audience here is familiar with this language, but I'm gonna explain it nevertheless, so that we're all understanding what I'm talking about. When I talk about ministerial approval, what I mean is, is that the city has to approve an application, so long as it meets the technical requirements. The city doesn't have any ability to reject it. That would be discretionary review. Next, we'll talk about environmental laws. This is typically SEQA. We'll talk about some changes that occur there. We're gonna talk about density, land use, and planning generally. We're gonna talk about some incremental changes to the accessory dwelling unit law, commonly known as ADUs or granny flats. This is one of those areas that every year, the legislature slowly changes what the law is in this area, because they are constantly, they want ADUs to be a solution to the affordable housing crisis in the state of California. And for some reason, it hasn't taken off the way they want. So they keep making changes, and we'll talk about some of those. We'll talk about some changes to affordable housing laws generally, and then we'll finish up with enforcement, because there's some changes to the enforcement mechanisms primarily at the state agency responsible for regulating this activity, HCD, or Housing and Community Development. For means here at the staff table with me, Ben is in the audience. I encourage either one of them. I'm talking about the laws and what the changes are. There are a lot of projects, there are a lot of properties in the city of Yucaipa. If any of these laws would change how some of those projects or properties are gonna be treated, they have some specific examples, perhaps the city manager. I would encourage staff to cut me off, and we could have a concrete discussion about how that might affect the city. All right, so we're gonna dive in. Project streamlining is the first one. So the biggest one here is AB 423. AB 423 is simply an expansion of one of the first groundbreaking housing laws that came out in 2017. This was SB 35. So this is SEQA exempt, right? So what that means is, there's no environmental review that the city engages in for these projects. Environmental review is things like traffic, noise, aesthetics, other forms of environmental effects that housing could have on the city and on the environment. These projects are exempt from that level of review. Time limited. There are mandatory timeframes that these projects have to be reviewed and approved within. 90 to 180 days. It depends on whether it has more or less than 150 units. That is a common cutoff that you'll see in a lot of these projects. So if it's under 150 units, it has to be reviewed and approved ministerially, that's that word that we talked about, within 90 days. If it's over, they have 180 days. And this is for residential and mixed-use projects in most California jurisdictions. So all California jurisdictions are subject to what are called regional housing goals. This is under the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It's called RENA. Once a year, one of these super-government agencies, in our case, SCAG, Southern California, so city governments, is responsible for determining how much housing the region of Southern California needs. And then they go to each jurisdiction, and they say, you're required to have this much housing. You're required to have this much housing. And most agencies don't meet them. I would call them more aspirational than realistic. If you're not meeting your housing goals, you're subject to this law. Most agencies are. Some of the requirements that the city is required to, a project would require to do is, it has to be a true infill site. I'm not gonna go through the long list of requirements on what is an infill site and what's not. Just know that infill generally means that you are not a green, virgin piece of land on the edge of the city, right? Generally speaking, you're an interior site within the city. You're generally developed around you, which usually means you have right-of-way, you have streets already, they already have utilities, and you already have development that's around you. I saw Ben slowly edging up. So Ben, if you wanna grab the mic, go right ahead.
Well, I wanted to, I think, quickly kind of note two different things. So SB 35, just for the council's reference. Our RENA number is 2866 units over the eight-year cycle. So that means, in order for us...
Say that one more time, how many?
2,866 units.
2,866 houses.
Over the eight-year period. So for us as a city, when we do our annual progress report, to not fall under this, we would have had to build at least 358 units in that year and maintain the 358 units every single year, otherwise we fall into that. We have not built 358 housing units this year, so we do fall under that. And then another component, at least with the review timeline, is, since staff were dealing with these requests, if we get one in, try and understand, does that apply for that stuff? We also have tightened timelines, and so in terms of staff resources, it does require a bit more effort on staff, that we may lose out on other projects because we're trying to make sure that we're protecting the city on that. And so there is a staff cost with some of these.
And so, you know, each project needs to be determined by the Planning Commission and by the City Council on its merits. But one of the things that, you know, when we've had projects coming before the City Council before, some of them have been asking for higher density. This is one of the conversations that needs to be considered. One of the considerations is increasing our housing production has the possibility of getting us out of SB 35 and now SB 423's purview. Over 300 housing units is a lot per year for a city the size of Yucaipa. But it's not impossible. So that's just something to keep in mind. That being said, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be Chicken Little, that the sky is falling. I wanna be, you know, tempered in my comments here. But there are some limitations on SB 35. It's why you don't see every developer kicking down the door to use it, right? So we'll talk about those in a second. But it expands SB 35 in several ways. First off, it extends the sunset. SB 35 was passed in 2016, went into effect in 2017, and it was gonna continue through 2026. It now has been extended to 2036, right? So we have approximately 12 to 13 more years of it. It also, and this is the, this is the part where I'm telling you, incremental changes to look for, they are reducing the labor requirements for these projects to be qualified. So first off, no more skilled and trained workforce requirement, except for projects greater than 85 feet in height. You're not gonna see a lot of projects greater than 85 feet in height in the city of Yucaipa. So it's not really something that is concerning to us. A skilled and trained workforce is a very high cost for a developer. And so the previous requirement to have a skilled and trained workforce, that's a term of art, I'm not gonna go into it. But essentially, what that required was, it's very similar to the city's requirements. You always wonder why it costs the city so much money to build anything? It's because the city is generally subject to these requirements. So when you apply them to the private sector, it makes it very challenging. Additionally, projects less than 10 units will no longer have a prevailing wage requirement at all. In less than 50 units, they'll not require apprenticeship training. So this is an incremental change. They have not eliminated all of the labor requirements for these projects. But I think it's a trend. I think that this is a conversation that is going on in Sacramento between the legislature and frankly, unions, about getting, you know, when you're talking about union workers, obviously having these requirements in projects is good. It increases the wages, it increases the benefits, it increases the apprenticeship opportunities. That's a good thing, I don't think anyone's disputing that. However, a lot of those workers are the same people who can't find affordable housing. And so it's a balance that Sacramento's gonna have to come up with. But the trend that I see is removing those labor requirements. And frankly, that is the thing that's stopping most developers from utilizing SB 35 and now SB 423.
Yeah, if I may add, I think when we did the study session a number of years ago for SB 35, when it came around, that was, the general consensus is that the prevailing wage would prohibit kind of that project type moving forward in the city of Yucaipa. Certainly, we are seeing that, and then kind of along the timeline as well. On my code enforcement hat, there's nothing more permanent than the temporary. And you'll see a trend with a number of state laws every year where, if they have a sunset provision, that sunset provision never hits, because they keep adding more years to it.
The sun never sets on the housing crisis in California. All right. Next slide. You know, I used the PowerPoint design feature, and I thought this slide looked kind of cool, but it's really hard to read, I'm sorry. One of the things that SB 423 did as well is it removed the coastal zone exception. So the coastal cities used to be exempt.
Have they not heard about Mentone Beach?
That's right.
Because we're on the coast, man.
I don't know if the Coastal Commission has jurisdiction in Mentone, but I'm sure if we gave them the idea, they would assert it. So it does expand into the coastal zone for areas zoned multifamily. So it's not over the entire coastal zone, but areas zoned multifamily. Additionally, we talked about before, just going back, the RENA trigger, right? So if you do not have your RENA numbers, you're subject to this. Now, there are some cities that do, and some cities are trying to get it. There's another trigger now, if you don't have a compliant housing element. So that's not an issue here, right? But it is an issue for a lot of cities. So even if they meet their RENA requirements, even if they're building houses at a pretty good clip, if they don't have an approved housing element yet, they are also subject to SB 35 and SB 423 now. And then last thing, I do acknowledge that pursuing a streamlined project is still costly because of those labor requirements. But like I said, if you look at the trend, those labor requirements are being eroded. And I would not be surprised if in a couple of years, if not sooner, we're talking about them being removed. And SB 35 streamlined, SEQA exempt, ministerial approvals becoming the norm for housing projects in local jurisdictions. And so, you know, we heard some commenters talking about lack of local control, and when's the time to fight? That's probably when a lot of cities are gonna have a real issue with state law. But that's in the future, for a future presentation. SB 4, moving on. So this is something that got a fair amount of attention. This is by right approval, so very similar to what we just talked about. By right approval, essentially ministerial approval, for affordable housing on land owned by religious organizations and higher education institutions. Now, the difference between the SB 4 process and what we just talked about under 423 is that this approval is required even if inconsistent with the city's general plan or zoning. So if you think about where higher education institutions are located, if you think about where religious organizations are located, they're not always, or even mostly, located in residential areas. Oftentimes, they'll be located in commercial areas. Sometimes you'll find even religious organizations in industrial areas. Um, so again, you're looking at sequo exempt, time limited approval for these affordable housing projects. Qualify, you have to be on land owned by the religious institution, higher education, there's a date in there, I think it's January first, twenty twenty-four. So it has to be land that's owned right now, basically. Uh, closely follows SB thirty-five and twenty-three, we just talked about. Oh, sorry, I didn't move on, uh, the developer must be a local entity, like us. Uh, a nonprofit, a developer connected with a non- contracted with a nonprofit, or who's done, uh, previous work. Um, and the housing must be deed restricted to low income, there is an exception for staff. Of the higher education or, uh, of the religious institution.
And then, uh, so this one is known, if you're kinda looking for kind of the, the headline, it's known as Yes in God's Backyard. It's kind of the name that was floating around the state, and so if you hear that, that's kind of the, the idea here was to, to allow for that. Um, and, yeah.
And you know, I, I think about, uh, our city, our, our city has a, a lot of religious institutions. Um, has, has a lot of, of churches, has, has some churches that have a big old vacant land in their backyard. Um, I, I can think of the, the, the church that, uh, my, my family used to go to, the city of Ucaipa, half. Of the lot was developed with the church, and the other half was a big vacant lot. Um, so, you know, I think there are probably some development opportunities for this in the city of Ucaipa. But, like the other one that we just talked about, there is gonna be a prevailing wage if you're over ten units. Apprenticeship program if you're over fifty, and you have to be infill. Pro- the law will, will sunset in twenty thirty-six unless, of course, it is extended. So similar labor requirements, similar, uh, you know, restrictions on, on it being used in a cost-effective way. Uh, but nevertheless, this can be used to convert commercial or perhaps even industrial properties. Into housing, um, so it, it's again, you're looking at what's the trend, right? And you see, we'll talk about a couple of other, um, uh, laws that are in this area. But you're gonna see this with other uses, motels, you're gonna see it with office space. The state is looking to convert anything that isn't housing and isn't nailed down into housing. Um, so we're gonna be looking at a couple of those laws as this goes on.
And I will note as well, um, the city has had a place of worship in the community reach out regarding this law as well, so. Certainly, I think some of the religious institutions are aware of what this law is entailing and trying to figure out. Whether or not it makes sense for their, um, their congregation.
Great, and then Mayor, just let me know if I need to speed it up, by the way. Um, SB six eighty-four, so this is, this is the one that terrifies me the most. Uh, in, in the streamlining category, and it seems small, right? Ministerial approval of up to ten units housing projects on small sites, right, tiny little projects. Um, sequo exempt, ministerial approval, up to ten units on less than five acres, no discretionary review. No public hearings permitted, we can't hold a public hearing, we're prohibited by the law. Um, it's just gonna get a boom over the counter. Um, includes parcel maps, final maps, uh, it's going to include, uh, building permits, project approvals, anything that we issue. Uh, it's gonna have similar requirements for water sewer lines' supply assessments. Uh, it's exempt from minimum property size, that's in our development code, that's in our general plan. Uh, the only requirement is that it has to have six hundred square feet minimum in lot size. Now, there's one saving grace for this, it applies to site zone for multifamily housing. So they did not apply this law to single-family residential zones, but that was a last-minute change. As it was originally drafted, it would've applied to single-family zones. So the legislature thought about it, they got a bunch of letters from cities and other folks. And they made a last-minute change to only apply this to six eighty-four, but they told you what they wanted to do at the beginning, right? And so like I said, you're looking at the trend, and here's what I was talking about on the labor side. It is one of the few sequo exempt streamlined processes that has no labor requirements. Has no below-market rate requirements, they don't have to require that it be for affordable housing, for low income, they do not have to pay prevailing wage. So this one, although I can think of relatively few sites. Where you'd wanna do ten units of multifamily, and honestly, a small project like that. Generally isn't gonna be overly concerning most of the time. Uh, but the lack of any kind of discretionary review, the lack of any public hearing. Um, and the fact that it's only because of a last-minute change that it doesn't apply to single-family zones. I think that's very telling of where the legislature's thinking about going with some of these things. Not to scare you all. Uh, AB fourteen, uh, fourteen ninety, uh, like I said, so we have. You, different uses for religious, different uses for higher education, uh, this relates, uh, to affordable housing projects. Uh, for hotels and motels. Um, so again, you can do an adaptive reuse of a hotel or motel, and this is actually one in Inglewood. Um, even if it's in co- conflict with the general plan, even if it's in conflict with the zoning code. Uh, the units have to be dedicated to lower income, and they must be seventy-five percent surrounded by urban uses. Generally speaking, okay, controversial kinda take on this one. Um, a lot of hotels and motels that would be converted are being used essentially as housing of last resort anyway. Um, so this is, I think, kind of essentially acknowledging the situation that we're in. Uh, however, this will have a significant impact on transient occupancy tax collection for jurisdictions. Um, and, and like I said, uh, you know, you're looking at the erosion of commercial areas of cities. And remember, we're already prohibited from zoning new, from converting residential zones into commercial or industrial, right? We're limited by three thirty, because we're eliminating, uh, potential housing sites. So what you're looking at in California is the available area to do commercial and industrial, which are the primary tax generating. Areas of any jurisdiction are being slowly converted into housing. Because that's what the legislature feels they have to do in order to get more housing built. Because there's so much opposition when you try to build housing in greenfield sites. Alright, so, uh, we can enforce objective design standards, that just means that, you know, we can make sure that it does at least look like a housing project. And there is a review time period of sixty or ninety days, depending on the number of units. Uh, AB one fourteen, uh, reforms to post entitlement permitting, um, I call this the nevermind, uh, law. Which was, projects were getting approved, and then the city decided that, you know, maybe there's a significant community backlash. Maybe there's a change in jurisdiction, maybe for whatever, maybe the, maybe the developer wasn't delivering what they promised, even though there was no way to hold them to it. Essentially, what we have right now is enforceable timelines for ministerial post-entitlement permits, like a grading permit. So the city can't sit on a grading permit if you have an entitled project. Now, there's going to be timelines for discretionary permits. And there's gonna be limits on the ability to appeal those and have additional hearings, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that one, Ben?
So the only thing I would like to, to kind of add, um, and it kinda cuts in two different ways. One is certainly from a customer service point of view, um, people that are doing projects in the city don't want building permits to take a long time. And so we already try to achieve reasonable standards with the review. Uh, we are developing our updated permit software system, and so we're actually including those timelines baked in. One to ensure compliance with state law with that, but then also just make sure that any project that comes in. Whether it's a housing project or just anything that someone's doing on their property, is at least done in a timely fashion. So we try to achieve that, but certainly does add a little bit more scrutiny on cities that are not fulfilling that requirement.
Okay, alright, so that's streamlining, uh, council, any questions in that area? Alright, we will move on to sequo reform. Uh, so there's some changes, uh, to, to the environmental laws, uh, that came out this cycle. Uh, not as strong as frankly, I thought the legislature could've done. Um, but nevertheless, we'll talk about what they did do. Uh, the first one up is AB sixteen thirty-three, so this is secret reform for infill housing. The legislature is well aware of, uh, individuals and groups utilizing SEQA. To ch- weaponize against residential development, okay? It is a well-tread path to try to stop a project that, uh, a residential project that you don't approve of. Um, by challenging it on SEQA grounds all through the state. Um, the legislature had an opportunity to address that directly, uh, they chose not to, so they didn't amend SEQA. This is in the environmental, uh, section nevertheless, because what it does is it creates a bunch of new city liability. Uh, so basically it created some new violations of the Housing Accountability Act. Um, if the city, despite the fact that the city is, is the lead agency who's required to do environmental review. And utilize its independent judgment, um, the legislature nevertheless has assisted us in exercising that judgment. By giving us a couple of rules, so there are some requirements to make, bring a project within the realm of AB sixteen thirty-three, we'll talk about those in a second. Uh, but if a project is exempt from sequel review under AB sixteen thirty-three. And a city fails to adopt that exemption, or exception, exemption. Um, there's a protest procedure and potential lawsuits, uh, to be brought against the city. So, the city can look at a project and exercise its independent judgment and determine whether or not it falls within the exemption. I would like to point out that most exemptions under the law are not mandatory, uh, they are discretionary. The city can decide to still do environmental review if it believes it's appropriate. Um, this one, I, I would no longer, I don't think that that's the case, I think that if, uh, if under this new law. If a project is exempt and the city doesn't adopt it, we're now facing liability for failing to find that the project is exempt.
From whom, who's gonna bring that action, is it the state on behalf of the applicant?
So we'll talk about enforcement at the end, but you're correct, it'll be both, both have the opportunity, the state can bring, uh, the enforcement action. Or the applicant can bring it. Um, I anticipate it will usually be the applicant, but I think in particularly egregious examples, uh, the state may step in. Uh, violation two, uh, holding a meeting to consider an EIR or similar document, but declining to approve it. Which raises the question of if the city is supposed to conduct an environmental review and then exercise its independent judgment. On whether to approve it or not, if we, how we're still exercising our independent judgment in this case. But nevertheless, that is where the state has led us, uh, under this new law. So what, what falls under AB sixteen thirty-three? Uh, it applies to projects that are in urbanized areas, that doesn't mean what we all think it means, the city is an urbanized area. Um, it doesn't mean that you have to, you know, have massive skyscrapers, uh, it, it essentially means you're an incorporated city. Uh, it is within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor or a major transit stop. Located in a very low vehicle traffic area, it's proximal to six-plus amenities. Now, this is something that the legislature is toying with now, this proximal to amenities language. This is how they are, it used to be that it was within these transit corridors, right? So you had to have certain bus stops on certain schedules, fifteen minutes or more. But a lot of suburban and rural cities were getting out of that process. Because bus use is relatively low in those communities. Um, and frankly, bus services, transit agencies are, they cut service during COVID. Because it was, they were having difficulty staffing, and frankly, the rural and suburban routes were the least used. Um, so rural and suburban cities were kind of getting out of this, um, so they added this new proximal to amenities. So bus station, grocery store, community center, pharmacy, clinic, library, school. When you look at areas of our city, I would say a significant portion, if not all of it. Is gonna be within a proximity to these types of amenities. Um, you know, when you think about, for example, uh, looking at, uh, North Bench area. Um, you look at Bryant and you look at Oakland Road, we have a grocery store, we have a community center just down Oakland Road, we have a pharmacy there across the street. I believe it's Rite Aid, uh, you have schools right there, just north of the community center. So that area generally, uh, is proximal, uh, to these types of facilities. Um, and then adjoined on three or four sides by urban uses, so again, you're not gonna be able to convert greenfields. Completely rural, hasn't been developed using this law just yet, but you see where the legislature's going. Uh, again, I used the design feature of PowerPoint and I regret it. Um, project density has to be at least fifteen units an acre. Uh, notable for the city of Ucaipa is that high fire severity zones are excluded. Which would govern a significant portion of our more rural areas, especially in the north and east side of the city. Uh, has to meet those SB thirty-five infill requirements, but again, no labor, no affordability requirements. So we have another example of an exemption that's being granted, where they're dropping the labor and they're dropping the affordability requirements. They just want the projects to get built. Um, I did do a slide with a significant number of, of other bills here. Uh, I, I do go through them pretty quickly, uh, but I, I did know that we did have a question, I think on fourteen ninety-nine. Uh, affordable housing SEQA exemption, so there's currently a SEQA exemption for affordable housing. But it wasn't clear whether that applied to just the project itself. So the design review or, or whatever other project approval is required, or if it also applied to the legislative act. So if you have to do a general plan amendment, a zoning amendment to make that project work. All of those acts that are necessary now fall within the SEQA exemption. Uh, so that, that does give a little bit more flexibility on those types of projects. Uh, four oh six expands the SEQA exemption for financial assistance. This doesn't necessarily affect the city very much, but it affects things like the county housing authority. Uh, when they're, when they are not the lead agency, but they're giving money, they no longer have to do a SEQA analysis. For the giving of the money, because they're not the lead agency, the lead agency can handle that. Um, SB ninety-one, to Ben's point, uh, we, we are removing a sunset. So, uh, indefinite extension of the motel conversion SEQA exemption. AB three fifty-six, uh, it extends the dilapidated building refurbishment SEQA exemption to twenty twenty-nine. Uh, and then lastly, and this one, I think for me as a, as a city attorney, um, is the most interesting. Modifies the process for preparing the administrative record on a SEQA case. Um, as it stands now, that's typically the obligation of the party that is suing the agency. Or they can request that the agency prepare it. Um, now, essentially, uh, it can be required that the city do it at the city's own cost. Or at the cost of the developer, I think on the balance, this leads to faster record preparation, which I think is probably a good thing. Um, but it will impose a higher cost on public agencies and, uh, potentially on developers. Alright, done with environmental, any questions?
Yep, I got questions. Dr. Wong had mentioned, uh, when is it time to put the gloves on and fight? How, has Huntington Beach, I think that's the lead agency in the news, have they had any success in their fights? Any success, any measurable ounce of success?
Legal success, not much. Um, political success in sort of, you know, uh, I think sort of standing up, uh, for local control. And, you know, looking at this through the lens of cities, their voters. Their elected representatives, um, are most familiar with jurisdictions. And are most capable of determining, um, the best way to address, address housing issues within their community. Uh, so I think politically, they, they've had success there, uh, they have had pretty significant legal costs and, and. You know, setbacks on the legal side, uh, and I think that's primarily a, a result of, um, the courts. Not stepping in to defend local control. Uh, whenever you're talking about local control, it's always a tension between the ability of local municipalities. Um, to exercise their zoning power, their, their police powers, um, versus issues of statewide concern. Um, and I think when you're looking at something like housing affordability, I, I think it is difficult to challenge the claim that it isn't a statewide issue. Um, so I think the courts have been generally hostile to cities that are making these challenges. Uh, that being said, you know, some cities have had limited success in certain areas, maybe getting their arena numbers modified. Um, I think that it's one of the reasons why the legislature goes slow. I think it's one of the reasons why they're making incremental changes now, it's less likely to draw a challenge. If it does draw a challenge, it's less likely, uh, to get significant publicity or to change their objectives. Uh, so I think that. So I think that they're going to be moving this stuff pretty slowly.
So at build out, our population should be around eighty thousand. Yes, okay. So we're at fifty-five and change, something like that. Does this two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six units take into account that we don't have a built out city yet and we're still actively building? It it would seem to me that RENA should should apply to those cities that are built out and you should look for new ways to add to your population. Well, Ucaipa is still relatively young. We're a thirty-something year old city. We're still building. Our training laws aren't even off in in the world of large governance and. I mean, can an argument be made that, okay, we're building, leave us alone. And when the time comes that we say that we're at our capacity, that we've reached build out per our general plan, that's when we will now entertain the state asking for more.
So I I think in terms of leading a challenge essentially against, it sounds like SB thirty-five is kind of what what you're looking at. I think that that ship has kind of sailed in terms of local challenges to SB thirty-five. I think there may be some challenges to the new expansions, but generally those are going to be coming from coastal cities. Because they're going to be challenging the removal of the coastal exemption. In terms of, you know, what exactly, you know, goes into the regional housing needs assessment. I think that that is a fascinating conversation. Because it's highly technical and in a lot of ways, it's kind of a black box. When you've looked, I think this is, this is probably several years ago now. But I I attended a meeting of SCAG where they were looking at the regional housing needs assessment. And the the mayor of Riverside actually made a really excellent. Challenge to the allocation between the inland cities and the coastal cities. That essentially the coastal cities were, and when I say coastal, I mean Orange County, LA County. Were essentially job centers, economic centers. They were hoarding all of the economic opportunity. And then trying to shift all of the housing burden inland, which leads to congested roadways, which leads to lower quality of life. And so essentially the argument was, and I and I think if you wanted to have some kind of reform about housing, you have to look at housing in the context of. Jobs and economic opportunity as well. It's all well and good to have affordable housing, but if you have to drive an hour to work every day. It it doesn't really do as much good. We we want to have housing, but we also need to have economic opportunity. And so when the state is gobbling up our commercial sector, our our commercial areas and our industrial areas, they're cannibalizing those. It makes it really challenging to provide affordable housing in our community, but also a high quality of life. In terms of low commute and economic opportunity.
And I may kind of add in, so I was part of the regional determination process for this current housing cycle and it's. It's an interesting process because you have SCAD trying to work through the technical elements. You have us as city staff kind of working on the back end going like, hey, spot checking this, trying to do the analysis. Ultimately, SCAD is still comprised of members of elected officials from cities. And so there has historically been this kind of push and pull where the the more affluent coastal cities. Really have always tried to push, you know, the the regional housing needs to inland empire cities. And, you know, high desert and other stuff like that. And so you compare what was, let's say, the fifth cycle arena. You know, cities like Beverly Hills, I think, had like three houses that they had to build. And so you go, okay, obviously housing is very expensive there. And they have no demand to do it. And then you have other cities and even the analysis, the city councils. In the past has provided letters, you know, refuting kind of the the determination process. And we were successful. I think at one point during this cycle, there was, I think, an estimate that we would have over four thousand units as part of our arena cycle. We were able to drop, I think it was about forty-five hundred, drop it down to twenty-sixty-six. And so there was kind of shift there, but it is. You're fighting a lot of people all trying to hold on to their same island and it's. It is a, it has not been an easy process, but certainly requires. Us, whoever is on the city council as part of SCAD, making sure they're advocating and then staff. Like us looking at the technical details and going, okay, this doesn't make sense. This needs to get tweaked and really advocating on that. We've been successful, but it's still a hard push, especially with the regional housing needs. The SCAD region was given one point three million housing units. That's a hard way to cut, no matter which way you set up the arena. And so it certainly added the the complexity and the the frustration process dealing with this current housing cycle.
So I want to talk about the enforcement for a second. Should we? Call their bluff, I guess, and say, okay, enforce it. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and let you do that. What, what does that look like?
Six is enforcement and part six of the presentation is enforcement. And I think, I think it's probably a good policy conversation to have. It doesn't necessarily have to be tonight. But I think, you know, in in looking at these laws, if there's something that you want to have maybe a closed discussion, session discussion on. That that's certainly something that that we can talk about. Although if you want to have a general conversation, of course, that's your purview, Mayor.
So, okay, I don't want to land Ucaipa necessarily in the same ring as Huntington Beach, sparring with the state. I think they have more resources financially than we do at the moment, and I don't think it's wise to do that. With that being said. We're the little guy, and if you've ever fought a little guy, they're sneaky, man. They're hard to fight because they've been fighting all their lives. And if we're going to be the little guy that's trying to fight, I want you guys to find creative ways to fight. Find those sneaky ways to push things back. Get creative, best you can, in in a way that the state goes, damn, we didn't see that. I don't know how their attorney found it. We missed it, but that's a good point. I guess they win on that in that regard. I get the, I I feel like there should be a way, and I don't know if this is something that's even been discussed, but. Cities like Rancho and Riverside in Ontario, they they are building. They they are not, they're not rural. In fact, their citizens come to Ucaipa during our fall seasons to enjoy our neighbors to the east and to enjoy our our quaint. What used to be cer- certainly more country feel. Is there not a way we can negotiate with some of these other cities to shift some of our housing burden to them since they're. They're building giant apartment complexes right down the ten freeway, Archibald in Ontario. Is there no way we can trade? We'll give you some of these units. We'll give you some units and maybe some apples. We'll throw in the Oakland will help us out.
I I think, I think you're, it's a very creative idea, Mayor. No one has proposed a sort of like a carbon credit. Or a carbon exchange program with housing. There there are certainly communities throughout the state that are pro-housing. There's something called a pro-housing designation. That you can pursue as a local jurisdiction. Where you remove a significant number of barriers to the creation of housing and to affordable housing. And it puts you on the fast track to significant amounts of state money. Now, that's a local jurisdiction's determination to make. Is that something that their community wants and needs? And the state has carrots for them, but the carrot, the the state also has sticks. You know, there are a lot of very clever city attorneys out there. You know, we 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 discuss different ideas that some jurisdictions have come up with, you know. One one jurisdiction, I think famously declared its entire city as mountain lion habitat. One city declared its entire city was high fire severity zone. Each, in each of those cases. It gets challenged, it gets defeated. The projects end up coming through, the city ends up paying the legal bills. That's not to say that there isn't perhaps some opportunity to maintain what local control we have. We're going to be going through a development code update process. It's an excellent time to look at those opportunities. To maintain local control during those. I think experience has taught me not to get too cute with the state on some of these things. They enjoy finding the loud tall tree and coming in and cutting it down. But I I do think that we have to look at what measures we can implement to maintain. The aesthetic and feel of the city of Ucaipa. I think that'll be during the development code update. I think that'll be an excellent opportunity for that.
Seemingly, the word respected by the state is sanctuary state. So if we call ourselves a sanctuary city for. Local control, they have to respect that according to their own doctrine, sanctuary city.
I mean, local control is enshrined in the constitution of the state of California. But as most things, it ends up being a balancing act.
So, and I only at the risk of drawing this out longer than we already are. I don't mean to sound like Ucaipa is perfect in the realm of housing. In fact, I believe we're not. I think there's a shortage of housing. People want to move to Ucaipa. Colleagues of mine that live in other parts of the the air, the the state, or Southern California. And they find it altogether difficult. Either the prices are too high, then people relate that to a lack of inventory. Or there's just nowhere to move. So, but I might fall back on what I said earlier. We're not built out. There's still plenty of progress to be had as we build. Alright, I'll let you continue your presentation. Sorry.
One thing I was just trying to kind of add, I think, to that. So. The way the state has approached a lot of the housing law is they're trying to just have housing built. So they're just throwing bowls of spaghetti at the wall and hoping what sticks. And if something sticks, then the job and that's what they're, they're happy with it. Us as staff and the city attorney's office and council members and members of public were the ones have to kind of clean up the rest that fell on the floor. And so it does make it a tough, tough process to deal with. The one thing that in terms of local control is we do get to control at least. The state has made it very tough to say no, but we still get to control in some ways, yes. And so as as Stephen talked about, the the development code update is if we're setting, if you're gonna build, you're gonna do it this way. Because that's the Ucaipa way then. At least there's a vessel where we're not fighting the housing and getting slapped by the the state. But at least we can have at least one vessel of of support on what we would try to achieve, so.
Well, and I think also just creating pathways to yes, like 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 Ben said. I think that oftentimes when we talk about preserving the city of Ucaipa. We spend a lot of time focusing on the no, on what we don't want, where we don't want development, what we don't want it to look like. I think that cities can wisely also say where they want to say yes. Where do we want development to occur? What do we want it to look like? How do we want it to interact with our city? And if you create those pathways to yes, if you create the path of least resistance. You'll see that I think a lot of development gets funneled there because they see the easier path, right? So I think when you're having those policy conversations, like Ben said, don't just focus on the no, right? Also focus on, okay, if we're gonna build three hundred housing units a year, where do we want them? What do we want them to look like?
So we we can control the, okay, there is nothing remotely rural about the interstate ten freeway, the busiest stretch of highway in the nation. So if we want to say, okay, we'll build your houses, we'll build stuff, but it's going to be as close proximity to the ten freeway as possible. So as to preserve more of the open land rural feel of other parts of our city, that's acceptable.
I I think that that's the same judgment call that a lot of other agencies have made. You you referenced the city of Ontario, talking about the Archibald project, it's a project I worked on actually, when I was the assistant city attorney for the city of Ontario. And that was the exact thought process was it was primarily going to consist of commuters. So why not put them as close to the freeway as possible? There's a lot of amenities down that way as well, so easy walking distance to go to entertainment, to go to, you know, food, go to the grocery store. But when you get further from the freeway, you start getting towards South Ontario, you start getting to the bigger lots, you get to the equestrian lots. And so I think that that kind of development pattern is tried and true, Mayor. And I think when you're looking at, you know, the city, the city of Ucaipa, that does it make sense to build a five hundred unit apartment complex? I'm not saying we're building a five hundred unit apartment complex. It's an example, everybody. Calm down. Does it make sense to build it on the ten freeway or does it make sense to build it up on Oakland Road? I think every single person would say it makes sense to build it down by the freeway.
So in an early meeting, I think, I think this was one of the meetings where I had with Chris and the sheriff of the county. He'd indicated preliminarily at least that there was a large plot of land very near the West Valley Detention Center that had been vacant for. Well, since the, since West Valley Detention Center has, was developed. That nobody want, who wants to build a house right next to the jail? But the sheriff had indicated an interest in working with RENA and then SCAG to. See if there's a way that we can alleviate some of the RENA burden from local agencies building there. Hey, I'll I'll take some of those numbers. Again, I don't know if that's, I don't even think he thought that was possible. He's throwing out ideas. Because he's certainly aware of RENA as well. I think it just falls back on my my request from my center chair here to the city staff is. Whatever you can do as creatively as possible to find ways to let. Us as a city develop at the pace in which we set forth before RENA existed. And that our our fathers on his dais did thirty years ago by setting up the general plan and establishing what Ucaipa ought to look like at build out. Without the state now adding extras, it's almost like they want to have their cake and eat it too, which is altogether frustrating. Back to you, sir.
Alright, part three, density land use planning. We have three bills here. We'll go through it pretty quickly. AB twelve eighty-seven, this one's a big deal. Essentially allows for density bonus stacking. So for example, there's, I'm not gonna go through each of the possibilities here. But suppose that if you propose a certain affordability mix, you would be entitled to fifty percent density bonus, right? So that means the maximum density, when I say density bonus, that means the maximum density in the zone, say, is ten units per acre. A fifty percent density bonus would allow you to build up to fifteen units an acre. So you're going above the maximum density that the zoning allows. If you meet the requirements of AB twelve eighty-seven, you might be able to, entitled to an additional fifty percent bonus. So you may be able to effectively double the maximum density. That that we have under our general plan and under our zoning code. The other, so it has four incentives or concessions. That essentially means different development standards that they want. The city to waive or modify, but I think the biggest one is bubble three there. We used to be able to require reasonable documentation. That the incentives, concessions, or the development standards that they want waived would have an impact. On the ability to move the project forward. This wasn't a very high burden, but it was a burden nevertheless. Staff could question. Well, if we waive the lot size standard, how does that make your project feasible? How come it suddenly pencils when the lot sizes are half the size? You know, and there's good answers to that. Maybe it's easier to put in the utilities. Maybe it, there's less land acquisition. Maybe there's something else, right? But we can no longer even ask for the reasonable documentation. It's simply presumed that any concession or incentive or waiver of a development standard. Will improve the affordability of the project. AB eight twenty-one. Creates an agency obligation to resolve general plan and zoning conflicts. So if there's a development application that's consistent with the general plan but inconsistent with the zoning code. The city is required to amend its zoning code within a hundred and eighty days to correct the inconsistency. Or it has to process the application, notwithstanding the fact that it doesn't comply with the zoning code. And then AB five twenty-nine, and again, I told you, there's a trend here, right? So we did churches, we did higher education, we did motels, and now we're talking about conversion of office space. Adoptes building code, so it adopts, they don't adopt building code updates. It requires that the Building Standards Commission. Update the building code in the next cycle. To address conversion of office buildings into housing. Because this is the thing that like, you know, after COVID and a lot of people went remote. We have a significant number of vacant commercial office buildings throughout the state. You know, people look at some of the buildings in like San Francisco, for example, and they say, how do we have homeless people but have empty buildings like that they could live in? It doesn't make any sense. Well, the answer is these buildings weren't designed for human residency or occupancy. You look at an office building, you know, it's a bunch of windows, a bunch of lights, you have an HVAC system. Plumbing is very limited. Electrical systems are not designed for the kind of loads that you put on with it with a residence. You're talking about, you know, refrigerators, washing machines, things like that. But there were no real standards for that conversion, which means that you have to essentially take an office building. Strip it, gut it, and then rebuild it as if you're building a an apartment building from scratch. I've seen some of the cost sheets and the the projected budgets on that. And it's essentially the same as building it from from ground up. For the most part. So it it, if you have to do that, it isn't actually any cheaper. So we'll see what the Building Standards Commission comes up with here. I think their mandate is clear. They need to come up with a way to essentially reduce the burden. Of converting office space into housing in a way that makes it an affordable and viable option. I just don't know how you do that. I'm not, I'm not a building inspector, don't claim to be an engineer, I'm not an architect. But I don't know how you take an office building and you make it safe for human habitation without having standards. But I don't know how you take an office building and you make it safe for human habitation without having standards. That are generally applicable to housing throughout the state, but we'll see what they come up with, that one's probably not coming, gonna actually have a result for a couple of years.
Yeah, and we don't have too much of office space structures, um, in Ucaipa, I know when I worked in the private sector many, many years ago. Half the building was never full, it was always vacant, so I could see that building converting, but we don't have anything applicable here in Ucaipa.
Alright, part four ADUs. Uh, again, I use the design feature, I'm sorry, uh, so this is the one that has a typo that was identified, uh, by Ms. Snodgrass. Uh, local agencies are authorized, it says not authorized, it should say are authorized. But not required to adopt local ordinances allowing ADUs to be conveyed as condominiums separate from their primary dwelling. Why? Financing is the answer, uh, banks did not want to finance the construction of ADUs. Uh, without the ability to secure it to some recognizable property interest that they are familiar with. They were uncomfortable with attaching it to the structure as a whole, as, to the property as a whole, they wanted some interest to attach it to, uh, and now they have it. So this, oh, essentially is, like I said, the trend. They started allowing ADUs to be built, people didn't build enough ADUs, they loosened the standards for ADUs. People didn't live in them, they built in them, rented them out on Airbnb, which is the exact opposite, uh, of, of solving the housing crisis. So they've done everything they can, so they started letting cities prevent them from being short-term rentals explicitly, right? Now they're allowing them to be condos, which means you can get, uh, a mortgage, uh, to purchase it. They're trying to create the new entry level home. In California, it's no longer a three-bedroom ranch, right? The new entry level home in California is going to be an ADU in someone's backyard. And that, that's what they're doing here, so that, they're, again, they're moving things slowly, but they are moving them.
Does that change? Or I mean, would it, I mean, we have to have like a unit, a unit be on an address, does that affect our response for emergencies, how does that work if somebody wants to throw an ADU in there? And do we have the ability to at least? Change something in the county's track map or, 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 our address system in the city?
Yeah, so we already do, um, we, uh, we're kind of in consultation with, uh, the postal service and some of the databases that use. Will assign an address for ADUs and we try to make sure that the primary address. Uh, that's associated with that parcel is maintained just because that's already in the database, so if someone already has a single family house. Trying to add in new address to also be in that parcel, uh, creates. Just GIS nightmare for everyone, and so we usually try to set up as a unit one and unit two, just so then that way, um. Is easily found based on when you type it in, you know, to whatever system, and then it's just knowing which one is the front and back.
Understood.
AB nine seventy-six, uh, so owner occupancy requirements. They used to allow that, and then they prohibited them, so this is one of those changes that the legislature made a while ago. It's now, uh, they've extended the prohibition, uh, it used to be that that was through January first, twenty twenty-five, now it's been extended indefinitely. Uh, AB thirteen thirty-two, uh, this is. The local agencies are required to start creating these pre-approved ADU plans, uh, making them available on our website. Putting a list of contractors who build the pre-approved ADU plans. And streamlining the approval, already ADUs, I think every time I come to the counter, frankly, I see someone at the counter talking to staff about ADUs. Uh, it, it's, it's a very common thing that people are doing, uh, in, in the city. Uh, if you are building a pre-approved ADU, it's now streamlined down to thirty days to get prime approval, and like Ben mentioned. With all the other streamlining requirements and then the other just general planning requirements. This puts a huge burden on staff to timely respond, uh, to people's requests.
The one benefit that we, so this, we have been looking at this anyways at a staff level just to help kind of add. Just a customer service where it's really straightforward, this is what you're doing at property. The benefit is we can also kind of create the, the architectural design through those pre-approved plans that. Match in whatever the houses, so if you have more Spanish style, Craftsman style, these are the design features that are consistent with that and. And hopefully adds a little bit more design focused elements to it that wouldn't have normally been in place otherwise.
And then, and then I did want to address, sorry, going back to nine ninety-six, one second, uh. Snodgrass, I have a question about whether this would allow, um, com- but large-scale builders, uh, to build ADUs. Um, on, on, on the property, I don't think that this restriction affects it one way or another. But I, I do see that as a trend, I, I can tell you that. I think it's gonna be primarily market-driven, uh, I, I think that, uh, there are a lot of people out there who. Are looking at the sort of next-gen, uh, housing concepts where you're buying a house that has an ADU already integrated. It's something that, uh, is attractive, uh, to a lot of buyers, and I think that, that, that's where you're gonna see it coming from.
Currently, I believe the last time we were given information on the housing update or this, this topic. It had to be, uh, owner occupied ADU and had, the owner had to be, or excuse me, it had to be the owner of the property.
I, I think you're talking about lot splits, mayor.
So this is not a.
No, this is just ADUs, you don't have to, you, in fact, if you split the lot, it would no longer be an accessory dwelling unit.
Correct, that's on dwelling, so. Currently, can a developer build an ADU that is then marketed as a sole and separate condominium from the original house?
Uh, that's a good question, um, I'm not seeing anything that would stop it, um, in, in the, the legal framework that exists in the state right now. It's been something that's been going on for a while, uh, I think that the conversation we had at the council meeting was about lot splits. So essentially. Developer goes into a zone, picking one at random, it has one acre per dwelling unit. Could a developer split the lot, build two houses, build two ju- junior ADUs? Build two ADUs in the full-size ADUs in the back, thus taking a one dwelling unit per acre and turning it to essentially six. Um, and, and that lot split was the part that had the owner occupancy, that hasn't changed yet. Yet. But again, you're seeing the trend. They want, they want these things to be built, and they're gonna slowly take away these restrictions until they get what they want, so. We're, we're just kind of along for the ride at this point.
There's a lot of bowls of spaghetti that they're about to throw, so.
Yeah. Alright, part five, affordable housing, we'll keep it rolling, uh, this includes the SB four thirty-five motion to strike. So any lawsuit challenging, challenging the approval of affordable housing, uh, is now gonna have a special procedural motion. It's essentially equivalent to the anti-slap motion to strike. Which means the case stops, right, discovery stops. The motion has to be heard, there's a very high burden. For the person challenging the affordable housing project, they have to prove, uh, that they have a substantial likelihood of succeeding on the case, that's a very high burden very early in a case. Right, and if they lose, they have to pay the attorney's fees, mandatory payment of attorney's fees. That's a very powerful tool, the question, uh, from Ms. Snodgrass is whether that applies to sequo cases. I don't know the answer to that yet, I mean, technically, uh, a sequo case is a challenge. If it was a sequo, uh, case that was challenging an affordable housing process, or affordable housing project. Technically, it's a lawsuit challenging affordable housing, um, I think that's gonna be a very interesting case for whatever poor judge. Uh, has to decide that in the first instance, I, I could see a really good argument that it would apply to sequo. So, but I don't know the answer to that yet.
Well, and I think kind of to the, the erosion of, of different components is. The, the, amending sequo has generally been considered as kind of the third rail, and so you've seen chipping away on other parts of how sequo works, and so I could see that. That trend lending to this applying.
At, at some point, they're gonna have to address sequo at some point, um, but right now, like Ben said. They are creating exceptions in other laws, uh, that, that make our lives very interesting, uh, AB eight twelve. I don't know if we have a cultural district in the, in the definition of this, uh, ordinance, we should check it out. But it does allow the city to acquire the set aside of ten percent of affordable housing for artist housing. This is, this is an interesting one, the, the legislature is. We were talking, when I, when I was kind of pontificating there for a second, right? I was talking about how you need to be able to live close to where you work, that's, that's one of the things that's about a good quality of life, nobody likes commuting for an hour. So the legislature has now made a profession-based allowance in affordable housing. So depending on what your job is, you get entitled to affordable housing that nobody else gets, right? Artists get to live close to cultural districts, the, the governor hated this and said, I am not gonna be signing. Profession-based affordable housing covenants in the future, but I think he's gonna have a hard time with it, I think the next one's gonna be teachers. Or nurses, you know, building nurses' housing next to hospitals, building teacher housing next to schools. I, I think that the legislature is kind of thinks that they're on to something here, which is trying to build housing next to where people work. This is one of the ways I think they're gonna do it, they started with artists, what I thought was interesting, but we'll see where they go.
My bandmates will be living around my house with, uh, with.
I, I will research whether the Y-PAC constitutes a cultural district. I, I feel like it, it's very cultural, uh, but I don't know if it's a district unto itself, we'll see if, uh, we can set aside some, uh, housing for artists. Let's see, constitutional amendments, there's gonna be a lot of constitutional amendments on the next ballot, uh, from the state, pay attention, there's a lot of things going on. Uh, relate to housing that relate to taxes, the two that I want to talk about right now are the repeal of Article thirty-four of the constitution. Which requires voter approval, uh, essentially for public housing. And then, uh, Assembly, uh, Constitutional Amendment number one, which is gonna lower the threshold for affordable housing bonds. You are just gonna see multiple items on the ballot about lowering voter thresholds for bonds. How, affordable housing is one, infrastructure is the other. The state is trying to build more, they're trying to build California again, I think this is one way to do it. Uh, AB twelve eighteen, uh, this relates, so there are already requirements that you replace housing units that you. Destroy or relocate when you do some other project, I think they've just expanded it, I didn't feel this worth going into a lot of detail, but essentially if. We lose housing because of an industrial or commercial project, it has to be replaced, but we already knew that. Enforcement, this is the, the mayor's favorite part. Alright, and again, I should not have used the design feature. Expanded HCD enforcement authority is essentially what this is about, so back in twenty seventeen. No one had ever heard of HCD, okay, let's be honest, they were a small government agency that had a few grants that they handed out. Uh, starting with the housing crisis and all this legislation, HCD's role and their ability to bring enforcement actions has grown substantially. In twenty seventeen, they had express enforcement authority over four statutes. Housing Accountability Act, State Density Bonus Law, Fair Housing Law, and then no net loss requirements of three thirty. Subsequent legislation broadened their authority every year from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one. AB four thirty-four brings thirteen new areas within HCD's enforcement authority. Uh, including five, uh, statutes adopted this year. Frankly, they have been out hunting for deputy city attorneys, they've been trying to hire people who know local land use and planning law. And trying to hire them into their enforcement arm, uh, one of their enforcement arms is based in Riverside. And it's terrifying for me because they're hiring people who know all of our local, uh, our local agency tips and tricks. But the, the point is that they are now going to have enforcement ability over streamlining approvals, ADUs, the condo sales that we talked about. They are going to have, uh, when we talked about SB nine, those ministerial lot splits that we talked about, mayor, just a second ago, they're gonna have enforcement authority over those. Residential development and commercial zones, uh, hearing rules, uh, and then several of those bills that we talked about today. So ministerial approval of the, of the small multifamily infills, eight, the SB six eighty-four, the one that scares me. And the SB four and, and twelve eighteen as well. That's the end of the presentation, um, I promised the city manager wouldn't take more than ten minutes. I promise I don't bill by the hour, but, but anyway, uh, that, that's the end of the presentation, uh, any questions you have, happy to answer.
I've been in shootings that are, uh, less blood boiling than hearing the state taking more of our local control away, every time you guys present this, I leave here angry. I don't have any further questions, I think I asked mine already, Councilman Thor, do you have any?
No, I'm just trying to absorb it all.
Councilman Vettal?
Lots to absorb, luck.
So basically, the state of California is, um, trying to force us to build a lot of low-income housing in our city. And they're going to develop every rule they can to make sure we have no say in that, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
They, they are, uh, I would say charitably, they're trying to get you to say yes. And they're figuring out, like I said, they have carrots available to jurisdictions, but they're bringing sticks too. I think what's interesting is you noticed in several of those laws, they got rid of the below-market rate requirements. They got rid of the low income, they don't even, they just want you to build housing at this point, uh, and they will take any housing they can get. So I think what you're, what you're looking at is. Like Ben mentioned, they are throwing everything they can at this problem, and they're just hoping. That something will solve it because, uh, they've been working at it now for six years and housing has not gotten more affordable in this state.
So basically, when, uh, one of the, uh, one of our constituents said we should, uh, push back on some of it. Does that mean basically that we just kind of set tight and wait and see what comes to us as far as development pros- projects? But not make a big deal about it, try to squash it or sort of not approve it based on. You know, not making a big deal about it, or how do we, how do we pu- slightly push back, I don't quite understand the concept.
Uh, I, I think that there's a lot of different options, uh, there's the, you know. Very blunt instrument of simply suing the state, challenging the validity of a law, um, that's expensive. Frankly, I think kind of unlikely to result in success, um, all the way through, um. Applying the letter of the law, doing exactly what the law requires. And then maintaining local control in every other area that we can, um, there's. Not implementing some of the requirements that the city has a good faith belief, I don't, I don't think that it's, it would necessarily be appropriate for the city to simply say, we're just not gonna follow the law. Right, I, I think that if the, if the city felt that there was a good faith belief that a law was unenforceable or invalid. To not comply with it and then seek a judicial determination of that, I think that would be the appropriate way to go. Uh, but, but I think that, you know, what Ben was kind of getting at, what I was kind of getting at is, I think that. The tendency is to say, how can we say no? And, and I wanna kind of maybe start thinking about. We spent a lot, I've, over the last year, I've heard a lot of no, right, we don't want this, we don't want that. I think this development code update really is an opportunity, I think, for this community to say, look, we do want affordable housing, like. Uh, you know, I was talking, uh, to my brother, uh, lives in Ucaipa, wants to move out of our parents' home, right? And wants to be able to afford a place to live, uh, in the city. I, so I think that you want to have that conversation about how can our children afford to continue to live in the city of Ucaipa? Uh, how can you do that without just having endless, uh, boxes? You know, that, that don't reflect the community values, so I think, I think figuring out. How you can say yes is probably the most productive conversation, and I think that that'll be really good for the city, uh, for the residents and also for the development community. Because if they know what the community wants, they can gear the development in that direction.
Are all these laws now, are these, uh, bills already passed, are they enforced?
These bills have been all signed by the governor, uh, they are all going into effect on January first, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
So month and a half.
Interesting.
We, the, the last council signed, I think, at least two resolutions, uh, joining coalitions for local control. I think, uh, a councilman out of Hawthorne kind of had some. Group going, cause some committee to kind of just show a, a show of force, if you could. In the next couple meetings, find out if there's any other ones that we can, just don't be part of, uh, I, I don't want to spend money at this point on, on litigation that we don't feel will be successful in. Um, I don't, I don't like, and I'm not, I'm not referring to you, sir.
I, I'm fine when you spend money on litigation.
Well, I don't, I bet you are, I don't like cowardly attorneys though, that are, like. I don't like, well, I don't, I bet you are. I don't like cowardly attorneys though, that are, like, I'm gonna use DAs, cause that's what I have most, uh, interaction with. You, you got hired, you're an attorney, you should like to argue, let's argue. Losing is an unfortunate side effect sometimes of a fight. Uh, I don't like losing either. But if we can find creative ways to, uh, join some of these fights that are not, uh, gonna cost us financially, show of support uh, with other cities that are fighting, fighting the good fight, if you will.
Sure.
And finding ways to, like, um, let, let Ontario, let Rancho, let these bigger cities that want development, let them have our numbers. Let's find a way to make Ucaipa, um, something that people still wanna visit, um, if, if there's a way we can do that.
I, I, I think on the legal front, there's certainly ways to join in amicus briefs. Oftentimes you'll, you'll find, uh, uh, league council, our, our firm will oftentimes write amicus briefs. We did so on behalf of the league in some of those housing cases. You can add all the cities you represent, so I can work with the city manager to, you know, add the city of Ucaipa's name. We want council approval for that, of course.
Sure.
But there'd be no cost to that, it would simply be joining in and saying you support it. I think that fighting this on the legal battlefield, I guess, is only one way. I think that, you know, maybe working through the city manager, uh, you know, looking at the city's legislative platform, looking at uh, the city's lobbying efforts, and then frankly, your own relationships with local legislature, legislators is also probably one of the most effective ways to address this. Uh, you guys are on the front lines, uh, of, of the, of the housing crisis. Sometimes people go to Sacramento, they forget the challenges, uh, that you have to face here. And so, I don't know, city manager, if you wanted to sort of chime in on kind of how they could maybe, uh, work outside of the legal realm to address these policy issues as well.
Yeah, the, uh, we are working on a legisla- legislative platform. Uh, in the past, the city hasn't adopted, uh, a defined platform. It's kind of brought, um, uh, uh, legislation to the council kind of one at a time as they're proposed to, to ask for, the city taking position one way or the other. Uh, but we are working on a more comprehensive legislative, uh, platform. You know, i- it's difficult because of, of course, um, you know, whether like, whether we like it or not, the city of Ucaipa sits in the state of California. And, uh, kind of the, um, how should I say, overarching ideology, uh, here in Ucaipa is not necessarily usually in line with that of the majority of the state. And so, as, as a result, the, 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 the supermajority that exists, uh, in the capital is not in line with, with necessarily what we want on these, on the housing topic. So, you know, I, I think it's always helpful to go talk with our, our, uh, state, um, senators and assembly members. How effective they'll be able to be on our behalf, um, within, uh, the state senate and the state assembly, given that they are very much in the minority. I don't know. Uh, but, but that's not to say that we shouldn't, we shouldn't express our, our opinions anyway.
And that's, the next part is, if you're listening to this and you find yourself altogether frustrated with the mandates coming out of Sacramento and your elected official voted in support of these, perhaps it's time to vote for a different elected official. It's more in line with your views, so voting certainly has its consequences, um, as we all, um, have heard. This, uh, is this just a receiving file? Do we just motion, vote on this?
I have one more question. So that sunset clause or that sunset, does that give us ten more years to meet the twenty-eight sixty-six Rena numbers that we have, or?
No, so the way that the sunset clause is, it says that this law shall be in effect from the date of execution until it ends. And so, it's kinda independent of the Rena stuff, um, but as we've seen with all the sunset laws is they never actually sunset. But that's usually what it is, so like SB thirty-five, for example, was only supposed to be technically in place for, you know, five years or so. Well, it's now year si- seven since it was first signed, the sunset has been pushed back and so.
So this is the sixth housing cycle that we're in now, is that right?
Yeah, that, so that's for the Rena, so the Rena process started when, uh, Ronald Reagan was governor of California. So back in the, uh, early seventies and has been there, but the laws have evolved a lot over the past fifty years.
So you mentioned that we'd have to, we'd have to have three hundred and fifty housing starts per year for the next seven years to make, meet the Rena numbers?
Yeah, to avoid the SB thirty-five provisions from applying to the city. And so if you, when I do the annual housing, annual progress report, one of the line items, you'll see with every development project was, was this subject to SB thirty-five or was this a SB thirty-five application? And so, so far, it's been no in the past couple of years, but that's something that every city's reporting on as well.
And, and Mayor Protem, I think, like I said, the trend on this one is they're never gonna end it, they keep extending the sunset. I think if the legislature takes out those labor requirements, they take out the prevailing wage requirement specifically, we will get a significant number of thirty, eight, of, of SB thirty-five applications. They haven't taken it out yet, um, but you've seen them take it out in other laws. Um, and so I, I think that in the next year or two, or maybe three, uh, we are gonna see some changes to housing laws where you will start to see significantly more CQ exempt, ministerial timed, uh, p- uh, very quick time period housing applications. Uh, and then you will hit your Rena numbers because there'll be very little ways to stop it. Hopefully, we can get our development code update by that time, we can identify, uh, sites so that at the very least, when those housing projects do come in, they're going into places that, you know, the city has talked about and finds acceptable.
Respectfully, sir, I think you're wrong. I think we're gonna push back against the state, and we're gonna change the tide, and we're not gonna be there, so. There's my optimism for the night. Uh, this was gonna, also, I was speaking to our, uh, Government Affairs Director, Mr. Joe Perdido. This was going to be a walk with the mayor, uh, topic, but I wouldn't, uh, you, y'all don't wanna see my face that long on a camera, so there's no way to make this short and sweet. We'll keep him, we'll keep him about roundabouts in white trucks at the bottom of the boulevard. Um, okay, receiving a file, this, thank you for the presentation, Mr. City Attorney, that was stimulating. Moving on to.
Came to be after a meeting on August first, where city staff met with the city manager to discuss the various standing and ad hoc committees of the city. We went down the list and discussed each committee, their purpose, and the frequency of their meetings. We determined that the list should be revised to ensure consistency and relevancy. Changes to the list included the addition of a standing committee, the addition of an ad hoc committee, changing certain committees from standing to ad hoc committees, and the dissolution of certain committees which are no longer in use. During the brief discussion on September twenty-fifth, staff received feedback from Mayor Protem Duncan and incorporated the following changes into tonight's proposed resolution. For the Mobile Home Park Committee, we included language allowing for mobile home park owners or owner representatives who are not residents of Ucaipa to serve on the committee. For the Trails and Open Space Committee and EDAC, we included language allowing residents who live in an unincorporated county area adjacent to city boundaries to serve on those committees. Additionally, we removed the ordinance changing the Park and Recreation Commission to a standing committee. During this review process, staff also worked with the city attorney's office to put together general rules and procedures for the conduct of commissions and committees. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash forty-six, approving general rules and procedures for the conduct of commissions and committees in the city of Ucaipa, and re-establishing city council committees, committee functions, and setting committee meeting dates and times. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Questions of staff?
I'm of approval.
I've got a few.
Go ahead, Councilman Thor.
So initially, this was to talk about, let me back up. My initial impression of this was that we were gonna possibly be looking at changing some commission, some commissions to committees, correct?
Correct.
That portion, we're not specifically doing tonight.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that, okay? You have a handful down here that we wanted to discontinue having.
Yes.
Alright, so I guess this is probably directed at my fellow councilmen and also staff. The only thing I see on this group here, there's one that I would like to see some reconsideration on, that's the Public Arts Committee. That's not very, um, long in existence, but.
Performing arts or public arts?
Public arts, the very top one.
Yep, thank you.
A- and here's one reason why. A couple of times over the past couple of years, I've tried to bring up, uh, the implementation and use of the crime prevention through environmental design. And while it doesn't sound like there would be a place for public arts in that, there actually is in that philosophy and how you do things. To help curb some of the unwanted users and unwanted, uh, crime elements that may take place in the city, there is a spot for public arts. So rather than us just curbing the Public Arts Committee at this time, one of two things, either we put this one on hold and massage it to see how we could use that in conjunction with our crime prevention through my, environmental design along with the development code. Or we close this one, direct staff, have them come back at a later date to form any different Public Arts Committee that may be more specific to addressing some of the needs within our city. One of the concerns with this current committee is that they don't have a funding source. So we obviously, obviously know we're working with some things with our budget right now, and so setting site funds for them might be difficult. And I, and I kinda can, you know, attribute this kinda like to our high schools, we used to have a lot of programs in our high schools where you had art, music, auto shop, metal shop, wood shop, auto shop, those kinda things. Anytime you run out of money, those are the first things that go. Well, I don't wanna see it go away because I think it would be, it would be a good thing to have in our city. I proposing an idea that maybe the staff look at when new commercial development comes to our city, that we have something in our development code, that they are contributing some sort of a, uh, fee, funding mechanism to help fund that Public Arts Committee, so they could take care of some of these things that would address, for example, in some of the cities and throughout our county, you see these control boxes for stoplights. And a lot of times, they're just blank canvases. And some of our freelance artists, we use them to scribe or graffiti on. One approach that the county has taken is they have gone out and they've done a study, and they actually have studies backing this up showing that so many inch, square inches of available space on a blank wall, park bench, bus stop, whatever it is sin- tends, tends to, excuse me, promote that kind of activity.
Right.
If it's blank. So they went out and they started looking at these control boxes and they got with a company and they generated these laser cut, uh, wraps, lack of a better term, for their boxes. The, one of the pilot ones was done right next to the sheriff's station downtown. And there's kind of a couple of us that kinda had a little side, we're not really a bet, but betting that it would be within two weeks that would be destroyed. And it's been about two years now and there's nothing wrong, there's enough, no damage to it. And they can be designed in a way that highlights your community. So in the county, each area of the county, they're, they're all different, highlighting what's in that area. So in the redlands, it's highlighting a lot of redlands things, but it still has things on there related to our county. So something like that might be good for our city, whether it's a local artist paints it or you utilize some sort of wrap for those boxes to curb some form of vandalism and things of that nature. But I think we would need a Public Arts Committee to kind of oversee that and have some sort of input on that.
So I, I tend to agree with you and, and I think there's an opportunity for, to follow up on, kinda on the meeting we had with the tribal council regarding, uh, education, and if, I've seen it done in a few cities and I could provide artwork to the staff. But there's an opportunity to, um, explain our culture and the history of Ucaipa. Perhaps the tribal council and the youth council that we had spoke to them about might wanna join and to find a way to do that very thing with some of these areas in the city. The Public Arts Committee is fairly new, and I know that what, early on, when I was appointed as the council representative for that committee, there was discussions being had about what type of artwork would be, um, in any future roundabout centers. And some of the proposals were absolutely horrendous.
They were what?
Horrendous. Um, and I think that having a committee of people from Ucaipa weighing in on what kind of artwork should be in the center of a roundabout. Some of these, I don't even think Sacramento would want in the center of their cities. It was not Ucaipa, it wasn't in touch with our culture and history. So I think public arts is one that I would like to see grow in some capacity.
So what do you think, either we keep it as it is, or we close that committee out as it stands now, we bring it back more specialized in our d- direction that we'd like to see in the city?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
If, if, uh, art in public places is something the council is interested in pursuing, um, I, I recommend we do it in a little bit more systematic manner. And, uh, you know, uh, my recommendation would be that we go ahead and, uh, dissolve the committee as it stands currently. And we take a look at, um, perhaps bringing in ordinance, uh, that establishes requirements for, uh, new development projects that, uh, there's a fee attached to that that goes towards art in public places, but, um, you know, it, it's a tricky thing, art in public places too, because who, who decides what is art, uh, what isn't? There are liabilities, uh, to cities associated with, with, with that process. So i- if, if, if public art is something the council wants to delve into, I suggest that you direct staff to, uh, explore that option and come back at a future date to the council with, um, a, a proposed way of moving forward with that. But I, I think staff's feeling is that, um, the, the way it has, um, the way it's, has been organized with this committee hasn't, hasn't really been effective. Committee hasn't really been moving forward on any, any significant projects. And so if, if we're, if we're interested in doing public art, then we'll regroup and come back and propose a different approach.
So what, what would be considered public art today in Ucaipa? The Roundabout at California with the, uh, apple picker and the tree?
That would be.
That's public art, and then at the Second Street would be the three-sided, uh, Ucaipa mural, I guess you'd call it. But what else would be considered public art?
You know, I think about, um, uh, for example, example, the, the city of Palm Desert, right? They have a program like this where development projects, um, you know, they're, it's part of the Development Impact Fee, they, they have to contribute a certain amount to art in public places. If you drive around the city of Palm Desert, um, and, you know, you'll see a lot of these, whether they're sculptures or murals or whatever they are throughout, throughout the city. Um, I believe that the property owner also has a say in, uh, what, uh, what goes, ultimately goes on, on their property. So it, it's not an unusual process for cities, it's just we don't have an established process here in Ucaipa for it.
My concern, Mr. City Manager, with dissolving a committee at this moment is we, it, it, um, I think it was created at a time when, uh, I think it was on the, on the, I would like to, I don't wanna dissolve the committee. I, I don't think it was given a proper chance to really, um, take hold. Um, and, and I think it, we've seen a lack of result from that committee, only because we, we haven't given it an opportunity to grow. So I don't, I don't wanna see that committee dissolve if we can avoid that. She still work on her staff?
I- if I may, uh, M- Margot was the girl that you're, you're speaking about, the staff member, she does not work here any, anymore.
Right.
Um, she, she does come from a, an artistic background. And, uh, the committee, I believe, was formed sometime around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And the first project that they took on was the mural located in the building of the old little theaters, the way that I, I referenced that, uh, which is on California Street just north of Avenue A. And after that, they did, uh, want to do several other projects, but, uh, forgive me, the reason that the committee, I believe, was first started was because the city wanted to apply for a grant, uh, to install, purchase and install art at the Roundabout of Bryant and Ucaipa Boulevard.
Yep.
That's not a roundabout, so we don't have any artwork there yet.
Yeah, and I saw the concept, concepts for that artwork. Um, there was like a tornado of butterflies. And I don't understand how that even remotely ties into Ucaipa. So if we're gonna have any type of art come before this council, um, like that, it should be passed through a committee in my mind of citizens of Ucaipa that can filter out the, I don't know who came up with that, but I don't think they know much about Ucaipa, quite frankly.
Could've been flies.
I have no idea what it was, but I, I will find, listen, I will find these, these pieces of art, art. And I can disseminate them.
I believe the committee chose that.
Say again?
Was that a committee? I believe the committee chose that art.
I don't, no, I don't think they did. I'm almost positive they did not, in fact.
So the, the committee reviewed the request for proposals, and they did choose an artist that was not a resident of Ucaipa.
I could've told them.
And I think that then we started to see some of the issues on the committee with people not agreeing and similar to what the city manager said about the right type of art for this community. But ultimately, the committee did vote to recommend, um, the art that you saw to the council.
That was before I was on the committee then, cause I don't remember seeing that at any meeting. That was, and I, I believe we reorged it, um, and that's where I'm, I don't think there was, uh, adequate input. I, I, um- Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, so what I'm hearing kind of with, from the city staff, is that the current committee as it sits has had some challenges besides just the financial aspect. So if we don't dissolve it and come up with something different, maybe a direction to them would be to address some of those issues and come back and how they can modify this committee so that it can address and be more effective, because I think there's some challenges more than just the financial end that we may not be able to get into right now, but that they would like to probably address.
I'm good with changing it.
Can we table this till, and take that off? Because there's some other issues on the general rules, just a few.
Go ahead, did you wanna bring those up? We'll get to public comment in just one second, sir, I think.
If we, I mean, if we could table it, then I can work with you on certain things that I don't.
So, okay, so why don't we do this? Well, let's do public comment real quick. And then we'll move forward with maybe a motion. So Dr. Hanson Wong, and followed by Mrs. Donna Snodgrass.
As far as I know, neither Ms. Snodgrass nor I are running for the City Council, okay? That being said, name is Hanson Wong, 3515 Court Street, Ucaipa, California. So I commend the city clerk and the city, we're trying to organize the committees and to see what we need and don't need. But there are a couple of items that I have some concerns about. The first thing has to do with the membership. The City Council originally was provided for the entire city, and then they divided it into districts, so we have representatives from the different districts. I think that each, we need to, no matter whether I agree or disagree with any of you individually, I think as a position of a City Council member representing a certain district, they should be allowed to appoint somebody and not just nominate somebody for a position. And then the other six or seven positions can be voted on by the majority of the members. So I would disagree with that first part that says nominate and not appoint. In the past, we have just appointed it from individual committee members. Next thing is, one of the committees I have some concern about is new, which is the Mobile Homes Unit. I think one of the reasons, and maybe Mr. Mann can describe it more, is they felt like they didn't have a voice, not just about the rent, but about the conditions of the mobile park units. And that if we have it just only the owner or the manager, what the mobile home person, that kinda dialogue sometimes is unproductive. And that we need a City Council member or a representative, or a person who has no skin in the game to try and help hear out what is being said from both sides. So I think we need to consider that. On item, in section two, item C, you know, treating the members appropriately, I think is very appropriate and should be done with courtesy and so on. And we should never introduce, as far as I can see, personalities or characters of people. We should focus on what we're looking at for the best interest of the city, whether it be for health or parks and recreation and so on. The only thing that I would disagree with is motivation. Sometimes motivation of an individual committee member could impact what is being said or done. And as long as it's done politely and civilly, I'm not sure it should be done, well, sorry. I just think it need to be postponed and revised, including some code of conduct for, and attendance for the City Council members on each of the committees.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Snodgrass?
I agree with Dr. Wong, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, you'll have to forgive me, I was not, I was not present during, when this first was being discussed. I was, I was not here, so.
I'll retract my motion to approve that, because I don't approve that at all at this point.
I think there's some more work that needs to be done still. Perhaps the council can meet with our city manager at some point with your recommendations, and we can move forward to have this come back to us while considering the comments of our public. Is there a motion to approve as is?
Yeah, but I just, I was gonna make a motion to table it.
Yeah. You want the motion to table it? How do you want to do this? Motion to, see if we even have a motion as is, and if not, it'll die and you'll come back?
I recommend we, if that's the council's desire, a motion to continue to our next meeting, which is November 27.
We have a motion to continue? Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Venable to continue to the first meeting in November, I'm sorry, second meeting in November. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Seconded by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one. Are you okay? Continue?
What's that?
You okay to continue?
Oh, yeah.
All right, we're gonna do a five-minute recess for restroom necessities, so we'll reconvene in five minutes.
Mayor, can you announce the time, please?
It is currently eight twenty-eight.
Thank you.
All right, let's get, let's get back to business so we can adjourn at a reasonable hour. We're moving on to item number fifteen. This is the public hearing. The time is eight thirty-four. Item number fifteen was relative to our comprehensive user fee schedule update. And our presenter is Phil White. Mr. White?
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Rotem, members of council. Item fifteen is regarding the comprehensive user fee update. Last meeting, we went through this, there were some, a couple of minor changes, ten pages of minor changes, and then four fees that were cleaning up. Three of those fees are related to signage, and those are on page one fifty-five of your packet in bold. Skip the first line for now, but the next three lines under code enforcement, those are the fees related to the signage that are coming back that were not adopted on the first go-round. The next nine and a half pages are just minor description updates to clarify what the fee is, but no changes as far as dollar amounts of those fees. The fourth significant change, which is the top row on page one fifty-five, is the EMS fee that is new. We're establishing that fee tonight. That's part of item fifteen. And to present that item, our fire chief will take it from here.
All right, good evening. So as council will recall, our paramedics are funded through a assessment, a tax assessment that was established in the county service area before the incorporation of the city. In 2004, it was deemed that that wasn't enough funding, as there was no escalator built into it. And then Measure Y, the paramedic assessment, was enhanced, again with no escalator or CPI in it. So it was determined at the time it would last for about ten years. So about 2014, that funding would be insufficient. We were able to build up some more reserves than anticipated due to the depression or whatever we were calling that period there. And it extended to a couple of years ago where we had completely depleted those reserves and are running in a negative deficit. So the funding without an escalator, 2004 funds just aren't quite stretching in 2023 like they were. This has been brought to the city. We did go through some motions to look at additional tax measure in 2020 that was unsuccessful. And we've looked at other options. What other options are there to not necessarily put the burden directly on the taxpayer or any tax in this city? So we looked at kinda industry standard throughout the state and saw that there was a lot of entities, many, many entities, who were billing insurances for EMS cost recovery. So, and what that means is, we're not a must-pay state, we're a, it's of the insurance's own volition to pay, but Kaiser wants paramedics for their people, they're gonna pay a nominal fee to have the paramedics for their people, even though they're not required to pay it. And that's happening now in the state through a lot of entities. The, so what the user fee is, so we can't even do that because we don't have a user fee. Because how do we determine amount without you establishing it that like, hey, give us money? I don't know how much, just give us money. So we hired Will Dan to do a professional study to look at, here's how much it actually costs to provide service, here's what you're recovering, here's the deficit, and here's how you can actually establish a number, which is what we're presenting for you tonight. So this is not a fee to go to an individual, and that's not the intent, is to go and charge the individual for it. We're looking at possibly going after an insurance entity of their own volition, not burdening the resident with it. But we can't do it without the user fee established. So it's kind of a crash course on that, but hopefully kinda clears that up and available if you have any questions on that.
So how's that get billed? Four eighty-nine?
So this is just to establish the user fee. We would then look at either through our spending authority or to council to hire just one option. So it's just, user fee is user fee, but one option we could do that we're considering right now is to get a third-party billing provider and basically give them all of our EMS runs, and they would go out and bill the insurance, and we would see funding from that.
This is something new, right? This is something new?
Yes, we don't currently have any type of billing or recovery for emergency medical service in the city.
This was discussed pretty extensively last year with the city. I believe at the time, we're referring to it as compassionate billing. Because the resident never sees the bill. The city would only bill insurance companies, and insurance companies that cover those costs and pay. You know, we'd receive funds from those who don't, we wouldn't, but we would not, under this fee, go after the resident.
So apologies, you did see this before in study session multiple times during kinda mid-year reviews and other reviews, and it has been recommended approval also by public safety ad hoc.
Do you suspect that that will help, how, have we calculated what that might do to to recovering the cost that we're currently losing?
We, it'll help close the gap, it won't close the gap. So we can't recover, the recovery rate's not a hundred percent, so you can't inflate the numbers to make that a hundred percent. And it's not a must-pay state, so we have an idea. But that's, and the way we're gonna try to trial it, just to make sure we don't have undue liability, thinking this can be the greatest thing ever, and then it doesn't quite pan out like it is. So we don't wanna, we don't wanna overcommit necessarily.
Certainly, we'll get to that. All right. This will be, uh...
Mayor, if I could, if I could just, uh, supplement what the fire chief indicated. So i- in order to establish that fee, we look at the, the current deficit. What's, what's being unfunded, the costs that are out there? Then we apply that, that, that pool of costs against all anticipated service calls. So we ta- take the historical service calls and then apply the loss against that, come up with the calculation. And then based on that calculation, it's that, that is the, the, the number that's, that's included here for the fee. If we choose to bill an insurance company for that fee and the insurance company doesn't pay, we don't collect anything. To the extent that the insurance company pays the fee, we would collect. And so in order to, we've never done this before, um, so i- it's tough to anticipate. We're gonna, the, on the recovery side, it's going to be something less, we're going to continue to lose. Um, we're hoping to minimize the losses based on that recovery, so.
All right. Uh, so there's no applicant or representative, uh... I'm sorry. There is no applicant. So we're going to move on to public comments. Dr. Wong is our only public speaker at this moment. Doctor.
If you don't start the timer, I mean, I just want you to know because you only have one meeting a month. I have pent up demands to talk to you, okay? So I have to talk twice as much. All right, sorry. You can go ahead and start the clock. So basically, you know, they're talking about approaching it one way. I think from my viewpoint and my past experience, that the insurance companies would be interested in approaching it a different way. So, uh, there are what's called frequent flyers for ambulances and services. And that maybe we can have a meeting with the insurance providers in our area to discuss the ways of addressing the frequent flyers. And possibly by getting them into their physicians and getting treatment and so on, that it would decrease the amount of times they would be calling nine one one and so on. But it's just a thought of getting it from the other direction. And I think the providers, the insurance providers might be interested in decreasing, uh, from their end as well. So it's just a thought.
Thank you, sir. In response to that, I don't think our costs go down because of tran- we, we still have to provide a service that's, that we calculate to a number. Even if you don't respond as many times, we're still going to be funding our paramedic program, which would cost money.
Correct. And the, um, what he talked about is, we would refer to that as case management that's already in practice. So we take any frequent flyer, we work with the hospital, we work with the insurance provider, yes, to get them out of the system. So if you're calling frequently for medication refill, stuff like that, where we can provide, you know, with our, our golden wheels? Golden wheels transport, uh, you know, to a doctor's appointment or something like that, yes. And reduce them, the, the strain on them and yes, they would, you know, incur some cost. But yeah, those base costs really aren't going to reduce.
Sure.
Anything by dropping, you know, a couple hundred calls. Correct.
Okay. There is, uh, as previously mentioned, there's no applicant, so there's no applicant rebuttal. Unless there's any further public hearing that haven't been turned in yet. There is not. I will close the public hearing. The time is eight forty-four PM. Council discussion. Councilman.
So did we address the, was this the item that council member Garner was concerned about, the temporary sign permit?
Yes, so, uh, we, uh, that has to do with signage, so that's on page one fifty-five. Um, so we went back, revisited, um, uh, Ben went back and looked at the, um, the hours that it would take to process those types of things. So there was an adjustment made there. Ultimately, where the fee that was, um, discussed last time was three hundred and something.
Three seventy-five, wasn't it?
Something.
Three something, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and so, uh, what you see on page one fifty-five is where the current fee has been and then the reduction for Ben's revisit of, of what it would take. And so ultimately, that specific one, that temporary sign permit was reduced along with language to say, if there's a permanent sign, there's going to be a further reduction in, in what that fee would be as well.
Councilman Thorpe, questions?
I don't have any.
Councilman Venable, questions, comments? I think if we're going to start making progress towards our EMS, our paramedic deficit, we need to be looking at every opportunity to, um, close that gap before, um, even the slightest, burden is shifted to our taxpayers, whether it be a public safety tax or, or what have you. Certainly, I wouldn't support anything other than a public safety tax. I'll tell you quite frankly, from my chair, I voted no on our last measure E because it was, um, sneaky. It looked like a public safety tax, but in the small print it said general fund tax, which I found frustrating. I, I, I want to live in a city that we're safe. I want to have strong public safety. That costs money. I'm willing to pay the money, but people are inherently distrustful of government. So government has to do the extra burden of taking on that public safety tax, which requires wording, um, and, or requires a threshold greater than that of a general fund tax. So be it. I think by and large, people in Ucaipa support public safety. They're willing to pay for public safety, but they're not willing to throw their money at the government, uh, uh, with, with, uh, trust. So, um... Okay. Is there a motion to approve of this item?
Oh, move.
Motion by Councilman Thorpe. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Venable. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries four to, four to zero. Okay, uh, I will open public hearing for item number sixteen. The time is eight forty-seven. This is relative to approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two, the adoption of County of San Bernardino schedule for parking and late payment penalties. And this is going to be Mr. Trevor Benson for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I didn't tap it. Just make sure it was on this time. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. I'm here today to talk about, uh, our parking enforcement fees. In the past, our parking enforcement's fees have kind of been arbitrary. No one knows where they came from. No one knows why they were set at the standards that they were set. And they've been the same thing for decades, from what we can tell. This, uh, staff report will have us adopt the San Bernardino County Parking Fee Schedule. We want to call it a bail schedule that you're familiar with. That parking fee schedule is, uh, reviewed every single year by the county and adjusted in accordance with other major cities. Prior to some case law in nineteen ninety-three, when, uh, the, the burden was taken from the state and, uh, the California habitual to set those fees, it was put on the county. We never, I guess, adjusted our procedures to go along with that. This will now, uh, put us in line with the recommended text of that law. So the, the recommendation is that we adopt this staff report and thus adopting the San Bernardino County Parking Enforcement Fee.
Thank you, sir. Um, there's no applicant. I have no public comment speaker slips. Madam City Clerk, are there any received down there that I haven't received yet?
Can I ask you a question?
Ye- let me, uh, let me close this real quick. Um, there's no applicant rebuttal. I'll close the public hearing at eight forty-nine and Mayor Protem Duncan has a question for...
Go ahead, sir.
So, I'm sorry, did you say?
Go ahead, sir.
So what, what is our current, um, uh, fees for, um, we're talking about illegally parking somewhere, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, the bail schedule varies depending on what the violation is. So the fee for parking in a handicap zone is much higher than the fee for parking, let's say, in a red zone. Um, so that varies depending on the citation. Uh, so I, I have a list. I can, I can read them off to you if you'd like.
So what's the variation in the different costs? I mean, the county's obviously higher.
Are, I'm sorry, are you asking if the county's bail schedule is higher than our, our previous?
No, I'm just asking you, eh, what's the difference? I mean, right now, we haven't progressed with the county with our, uh, fees. And so obviously, we're lower than the county, right?
Uh, no, sir. We were actually higher.
Oh, we were higher than the county?
Yes, sir.
Wow, no kidding. Okay. Well, that shocked my question. Okay, never mind.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate staff's willingness to look at this. Um, anybody who studies crime, the broken window theory certainly applies. This may seem like a petty and trivial matter, but when you consider it a, an abandoned vehicle or a vehicle that is, um, parked, uh, you know, near, um, bus zones or, or whatever the violation is, this is the lowest step for our law enforcement, whether it be code enforcement or the sheriff's deputies, to, uh, cl- keep our streets clean. And that broken window theory s- suggested a city that has broken windows or, you know, abandoned vehicles will then have a crime increase. So this, while it may seem altogether petty, um, this low, lowest level of enforcement does have a direct impact on lowering crime in the city. So I, I do want to applaud city staff for taking this on and ensuring that we are, um, uh, looking at our, our violation, uh, bail schedule so that we can defend it, uh, when we have to. Um, is there any further questions of staff?
Who gets those fees?
The city does, sir.
The city does?
Yeah. Minus a small fee to a third party vendor to process the citations, the city recovers the fees.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh.
Motion by Councilman Thorpe.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Councilman Venable. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. The motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right. Open the public hearing for item number seventeen. Annexation of track map number fourteen four twenty-nine in the landscaping and lighting maintenance. And the presenter here is Mr. Pressiato.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, the city's landscape lighting and maintenance district was formed in nineteen ninety-one and it provides a, a funding mechanism for the maintenance and utility costs associated for the improvements within public areas that primarily benefit, uh, certain homeowners within a subdivision or all homeowners within a subdivision. Um, all residential subdivision projects are required to annex into, uh, an L O M D or to set up a homeowners association. And, uh, more recently, staff has been promoting the HOA option for new larger subdivisions. The developer of this tract, tract one four four two nine, wishes to annex, annex this tract into the L O M D. Uh, this subdivision is a Mountain Gate subdivision located, uh, on Bryant Street near the, uh, Highway thirty-eight. In May of this year, city council did consider the annexation of this subdivision into the L O M D. Uh, during the meeting, uh, the city council meeting, there were several homeowners who expressed their concern regarding the proposed annual, uh, assessment amount. And they referenced an amount that they, that they had been shown when they had purchased, uh, the homes in that subdivision. Uh, city council at the time voted to continue the item to a future meeting and requested the staff look for other ways, uh, to reduce the annual assessment amount and determine if that assessment amount was appropriate. Uh, so staff did work with the developer and the developer's, uh, engineer and also with the city's landscape architect to make, uh, some adjustments to the improvements that are being, uh, proposed, uh, as part of the, the L O M D area. Uh, those adjustments, uh, included, um, uh, providing, uh, plantings in landscape areas that would require less maintenance and would, uh, be more drought tolerant to reduce the water costs for the, for that area. Uh, they al- uh, also looked at, uh, reducing, uh, certain, reducing the amount of fencing in certain areas that did not require that fencing. And I would like to note that the weed abatement and the maintenance of the fire fuel modification areas, um, in that subdivision were not changed. Uh, for this subdivision, the L O M D will include the maintenance of those landscape areas, the fuel modification zones, and also maintenance of the multi-use trails, uh, the maintenance and service for the entry gates, for two entry gates to the subdivision, uh, the fence, the, the maintenance of the fence and also the electric service for six streetlights within the subdivision. The developer's engineer has revised their engineer's report, uh, and has provided an estimate for the yearly maintenance cost. Uh, next to that, of that report is included in your agenda packet. Uh, by annexing this tract into the L O M D, each of the fifty-seven lots or the homes in the subdivision will be assessed the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventeen cents per year. That is a twenty-three percent reduction from the amount that was, uh, presented back in May to the city council, um, and the public. Uh, consistent with prop- proposition two eighteen, it is necessary for the owners of the fifty-seven lots to vote on the annexation. A ballot was sent to the owners in advance. As part of the annexation process, the city must conduct the public hearing regarding the proposed assessment and also consider any and all protests against the assessment. Uh, the city shall not impose the assessment if there are maj- if there's a majority vote to not annex into the L O M D. Forty-seven ballots were received in favor of the assessment, which is a majority. So staff's recommendation is that city council conduct the public hearing and, uh, subsequently adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, approving the annexation, uh, of this tract into the city's L O M D and also adopt the methodology for the assessment and enact the assessment. That concludes my report and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present? Making his way to the podium.
Kevin Brooks, uh, one seven four five East Harmony Way, Queen Creek, AZ, also Yucapai High Class of eighty. Not necessarily the, the applicant. Um, this subdivision was developed by, uh, the lot development was done by one group. A small builder built, uh, twelve homes in this community, um, prior to our involvement and disclosed what they thought would be the, the assessments at the time several years ago. Um, we are currently, the group that I'm work with, uh, Yucapai Primary LLC is building homes in this community. And this is something that was not addressed earlier by the original builder. And we're trying to put in place the long-term solution to maintenance of this project. The community is, um, you know, going to be, uh, upon build out a great community for, uh, the city of Yucapai. I greatly appreciate council and city staff for their efforts to try to, um, bridge that gap between the previous builder's disclosure to their buyers. And, um, again, thank you for your consideration and thank you for staff for bridging that gap.
Thank you, sir. I do also have a public speaker slip for you on this item. Is this? Okay, understood. I'm going to put this off to the side. Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to public comments. I do have a public comment speaker sip. Mr. Michael Wortman. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Michael Wortman. I live at thirty-four six thirty-three Canadria Avenue in the Mountain Gate community. And I was the first resident to move into that community. Um, first of all, I want to thank the council and everybody who was involved in looking at and, uh, putting the time and research in to come up with the newer estimated costs. It was certainly something that we were all hoping for because that was in line with pretty much what the first developer had kind of gave to us in all of our closing documents when we purchased or financed the homes in the Mountain Gate area. So again, thanks for that. And using, uh, drought tolerant plants and reducing costs of irrigation and maintenance and stuff is what we all do in that community with part of our own landscaping ideas and stuff as well. So certainly appreciate the effort for that cause. While I love the cost as far as associated with the L O M D, I do see in it that there is an addenda that says that they could increase up to five percent per year. I think we all agree that is maybe a little steep when we look at the cost index and the inflation rate kind of hangs in the two to three percent, which I think we would agree that would be a more favorable cost increase. The only other things that I wanted to talk about is, and though they're not big items. I mean, this, the street lighting in the community has, as council said, six. It actually has five. The sixth one is actually on Juniper Boulevard out the backside of the gate. And I don't know if it was put there for the gate access, but there was never one put for the front gate access. So it's, I don't know how that got put in there. Though it's a minimal cost, I would certainly suggest in the future that we would look at putting LED lighting... Though it's a minimal cost, I would certainly suggest in the future that we would look at putting LED lighting in if we're worried about the cost of electricity moving forward year to year to year. LED lighting is a cost savings of seventy-five to eighty percent per year. Uh using LED, they just use a tremendous a lot, a lot less energy. I only had one question. The annual property bill that a resident gets in for Yucapai on the general tax levy line, and I didn't do the research because I don't know the answer. But in researching it, there's a a portion of it that's associated with street lighting. And if it is, I'm gonna make the assumption that cities get that money back from the county tax board as part of their program to pay for street lighting and use of street lighting. I don't know if that's true or not. Like I said, I'm not very knowledgeable in the tax laws and how taxes are set up. But if it is, so my question would be, is that offset the cost of our cost? It's just a question.
Let's see if I can get an answer for you real quick. Do we have an answer for that?
Uh sure, uh there were, sure, Mr. Mayor, there were a few questions there regarding the annual increase to the assessment. That is based on the change in the consumer price index for the area or five percent, whichever is greater. Um it is a standard in our uh for our landscape planning and maintenance district district that applies to every zone that has been annexed into the district. Uh the sixth light was a requirement because it is at the intersection and it's our s- our standard design. It it's part of our standard design guidelines that a streetlight be installed at at a new intersection. Uh specifically or especially if it is the main or one of the access point to the access points of the new subdivision. And um I made a note here to look into that general tax question. I'm not familiar as to what that is. Um but we will certainly look into it. I uh regarding the lighting, once the city accepts the maintenance for that, then it will fall under the city's lighting program. It is eligible for the LED conversion, which is something that the city council approved uh um some time ago.
Understood. If you'd like to send me an email, I'll track down that answer for you as well and help you get with city staff to get that answer, sir.
Hey, certainly. Appreciate it, sir.
Alright. No more public comments on this item that I have in front of me. Does the applicant wish to say anything further? He's indicating no in the back of the room. Let me give it a second to make sure I don't get in trouble getting through this. Alright, I will close the public hearing. The time is nine oh three P M. Council discussion, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the motion carries. Moving on to item number eighteen. I will open the public hearing. The time is nine oh four P M. This is relative to you city of Yucapai case number twenty-two dash ones one sixty-eight. Uh amendment to number four thirty-five. This is gonna be presented presented by Mr. Matlock. The floor is yours, sir.
Alright, thank you, all of mayor and city council members. I'll try to be quick on this. Um this right here is case number twenty-two dash one sixty-eight. It is ordinance number four thirty-five, which is essentially updating the ci- city's density bonus procedures to be consistent with current state law. Um just kind of for frame reference, the density bonus law was actually started in nineteen seventy-nine. Um whatever the current state law requirements are, apply uniformly to all cities. So whether or not we have a code section in place, we still have to follow the state law. Um the city had last updated our specific ordinance in two thousand and ten, certainly based on tonight's discussion earlier. There's been a lot of housing law changes, not just this year, but over uh quite a bit of time since two thousand and ten. And so as staff, when we review projects that have a density bonus stuff, we are reviewing it under the lens of current state law. It means a little bit tough because our ordinance doesn't quite say that, so we're kind of referring to other sources. And so we wanted to make sure as part of the housing element that we updated our ordinance, make sure that we try to keep it a little bit more up to date, especially so that um our references are are clear and concise and available, especially for like plant commissioners where they're looking at our code going, hey, where does this come from? We have all these footnotes for where it comes in state law. And so we wanted to make sure that those um changes are made. Um this does reflect a lot of the discussions, so I did do a presentation for housing laws for our planning commission at the start of this calendar year. Um and kind of covered it, but essentially the way the density bonus works is the more units you have that are affordable or the more affordable they are, the higher the density you are allowed to go. And so there's a very kind of prescriptive table of, you know, if you provide X number of low income or very low income, you're able to get this much increase on it. And there's a number of other provisions related to waivers and concessions that allow you to essentially build a project at that density and gives developers flexibility on how that's achieved. And uh essentially, as part of a density bonus project, it is for most projects, at least a fifty-five year covenant, so it is a long-term obligation that the developer has to provide housing at those income levels as well. Um and then kind of as a function of a density bonus, it is lost on the city to say, hey, we want you to do this type of income or this type of income. It is the developer says, I'm gonna build a project at this level. State laws then says, okay, you qualify for this increase and this increase, and it's purely as black and white as that. Um now, the one thing that is unique uh with the city's density bonus um law is we do have a hundred percent density bonus for senior housing in our standard multifamily districts, and so that does carry through. The rest of the tables follow state law um as currently required by uh by the state. Um and that, um I'll kind of just given that the late meeting, um is kind of the proposals. Um this was reviewed at the October fourth, um twenty twenty-three Plan Commission meeting. They did recommend approval um to the city council. And then they did iterate that having kind of the current version in our code would make the process easier for them to help kind of understand um what the density bonus is versus saying ordinance from two thousand and ten and then new state law and trying to bridge to the gap. Um we're trying to make it a little bit easier for everyone that's that's using that ordinance. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any preliminary questions of staff before we go into public comment? No. Dr. Wong? I gotta tell you, as you progress through the night with your public speaker slips, you treat them more like a prescription pad because I cannot read this, sir. Okay? The beginning of your penmanship was phenomenal. Alright, floor's yours, sir.
Sorry.
Not at all.
Uh Hanson Wong, three five one five zero Court Street, Yucapai, California. So um basically, it seems like the state wants us to streamline things, uh waiving C qua and and just different things to get the projects done, and I can understand that. I think streamlining things is good. Um if we do it appropriately, it'll help the builders uh get things done faster as well and gives us timelines. The only thing I ask is that the streamline doesn't become automatic and that there is some oversight by both the planning commission as well as the city council members to make sure it just doesn't, you know, flow right through without any kind of oversight. Um in addition, a lot of the waivers now that I hear from Mr. Graham and also from Ben, it seems like that um it's not necessary and not mandated. But on the other hand, we should seriously consider to make sure certain things like if we have a hundred percent additional bonus density, that we consider the traffic and the other things that go along with it, regardless of what is mandated, so that we don't create a a logjam on ourselves. And because if we do create difficulties for people to come in and out and so on, they're not gonna wanna live here anyway. So we wanna make it so that people want to come and live here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think following up on that, is there? And forgive me if this question should have been answered or asked under your presentation, sir, but certainly there has to be some type of public safety in mind that if we're building a certain amount of lots in an area that fire our fire department can't get to quickly, that doesn't, that's not necessarily a uh an evaluation that is outside of the purview of these state laws. Um public safety should reign paramount, right? I mean, if our fire chief says this is not safe.
Many of the uh laws that we're talking about have exceptions for high fire severity zones.
Okay.
Uh which generally encompass those areas where we have evacuation difficulties.
Understood. Okay, um there is no applicant for rebuttal. I will close the public hearing. It's nine ten P M. Are there any uh questions, comments, or concerns of council? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve item number eighteen.
Motion by Mayor Proton Duncan.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion?
And then I do need to read the ordinance title, so I do have it here. Ordinance number four thirty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yucapai, California, amending Article seven of Chapter one of Division three of the Yucapai Development Code regarding the city's density bonus procedures to meet current state law.
Beautifully done, sir. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the motion carries. Moving on to our final public hearing of the night. This is item number nineteen. The time is nine eleven P M. This is the Uptown Business District Specific Plan. Mr. Matlock, the floor is yours.
Alright, I'll try to be quick on this as well. Um this is case number twenty-two dash one sixty-four. S B eight is a specific plan amendment to the Uptown Business District Specific Plan. Um this really is to streamline some of the review procedures and make updates to the specific plan based on some of the evolution that's happened over the past decade and to certainly comply with the city's housing element update. Um now, kind of bit of history, um the specific plan itself was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-five. Um in the late kind of two thousands, the city council did direct staff to make amendments um to the specific plan. Do you wanna kind of plug in a fun fact? When I was a freshman in college, I actually attended a lot of those design workshops for the uptown, so I do have a very special place in my heart for the uptown and the progress that's been made. Um I will have throughout the presentation, a lot of photos that show um the uptown kind of then and then what it is now and the progress. Uh this photo here are some of the different council members um from back in the day. This is where Brucaipa is now, right here. And so you'll kind of see the evolution of the specific plan. The first amendment was adopted by the city council in twenty thirteen. Um it really did include a lot of variety of the street designs, kind of the Yucapai Boulevard narrowing and more kind of landscape improvements and more walkability was the paramount component to that. And then the provision for misuse development, um and then the development of design guidelines for that specific plan. Um along that line, the city council also was engaged in a lot of key projects to improve infrastructure in the uptown, included the street improvements that were developed um as well as a facade enhancement program that allowed a lot of uh older kind of stretchers that were in need of some TLC to be renovated. And then there's also some flood control and other infrastructure improvements that further help kind of provide support for the uptown business district. Now, the uptown since nineteen ninety-five, the the twenty thirteen update, and then also in the general plan update in twenty sixteen, really has emphasized that the uptown is a a special place in the city, and we wanna try to help encourage that to flourish, to to continue to improve, um especially from the conditions it had been in the past. And so in the twenty sixteen, it did encourage further priority of the uptown, ensuring that success. This was then, as part of the general plan, has its own separate goal in the general plan and a number of different policies. As part of the cit- cycle housing element, um the city council did vote to include a policy and goal for the uptown as our housing element. It did allow misuse development, and so it was, okay, how can we further reinforce the general plan already with the housing element, make sure that they're working together and leveraging that. And so the twenty thirteen specific plan had included three land use districts. It had a limited misuse district along kind of Yucapai Boulevard and California Street, a misuse district, and then a R M sixteen to twenty-four unit per acre um land use plan. Now, as part of the housing element, um essentially, we have in the uptown, it's a sixteen unit per acres allowed in the different districts. But if you go to city council, you can say, hey, can I build twenty-four units? You guys then decide, yeah, you guys can do that. And that was how the process, and was through a development opportunity reserve process. Certainly with updates to state law, having this kind of subjective arbitrary process to increase the density isn't something that's actually supported by state law at this point. And then too, for a developer or a property owner, you go, what can I build on my property? And our response is, well, we don't know. You gotta go through this whole process with city council first to figure it out. And so a part of the housing element itself was really saying, okay, they're allowed to build up to twenty-four units per acre already. It just goes through this kind of separate process that really is no longer enforceable. The house element said, okay, rather than not get credit for this area is, we'll streamline it. It's gonna follow the same affordable housing review process that we already have and kind of remove that uncertainty through the process. Um I do also want to note, um you know, we have seen the twenty-four unit per acre housing projects built in the uptown already. This is the senior housing project along Yucapai Boulevard. This is what used to be there, uh kind of a vacant building in place. And certainly, this has been, uh I think, a pretty notable landmark in the uptown district um in this um current um state of the uptown business area. As part of the update, we also include some kind of cleanup items. Um one thing is, um you have in the specific plan had a few different spots where we talked about what type of uses would be allowed and kind of encouraged. Um this does include a kind of more formal table that shows the different uses and even add specificity. So certainly Brucaipa, um you have uh super sellers, you have the wine merchant, all these kind of activities that are part of that fabric of uptown. Really, we're never specified as allowed uses in the business district specific plan, but certainly we can't imagine, I think, uptown right now without those kind of uses. And so it helps kind of clarify these requirements and kind of simplifies it for applicants. It's in one spot versus kind of throughout this narrative in the specific plan. Um one thing that I do want to note as well with the the residential component is we do specify um kind of the misuse development on Yucapai Boulevard, so you're still able to do the twenty-four unit housing. But we will make sure that that commercial corridor still has some sort of commercial use in bait into that project as well. Um as part of the amendments as well, um just more formatting changes. So it reads as a document. There's a few spots in the twenty thirteen update where it reads as this is the plan, but then also this is what we're going to change in the plan, and it has kind of a weird just tense of how it reference it, so it was a little bit more streamlined. Um also, appendix lists to help track the changes that are proposed and that have occurred as well, so that if you're a viewer reading the document, you kind of know what's happened and evolved. And then finally is just, there's been ten years of growth, at least since the last update. Conditions have changed. The uptown anchor that's referenced a lot in the specific plan is now the Yucapai Performing Arts Center. And so there's a number of different things that have occurred over time that kind of leverage it. There's another example of what uptown used to be, what's there now with uptown wine merchant and woodhouse. Um and then certainly, the plan has been successful. Um it's easy to lose track as projects go through the time that goes, but uptown, back when this was kind of amended, you had a lot more of these buildings. We have photos of the uptown walking through in the the late kind of two thousands, and there wasn't a lot of activity. And if you go to uptown on Friday night tonight, there's a lot of activity. And so sometimes it's easy to lose track of just how much progress has been made, how much the uptown has flourished and making sure that as we set policies and evolve, that we're able to help contain that momentum and further enhance it. And so the Y pack itself and the festivals do attract a lot of visitors. It's well-known um for the region, and we want to make sure that that path continues forward. Um I do want to note for the environmental review of the specific plan, um there was a M N D done in twenty thirteen. They actually did assume that the whole specific plan would be built at the twenty-four units per acre. And then as part of the sit housing, um housing element did include the policy to allow the twenty-four units per acre as the baseline density, and that was assessed as part of that addendum as well. Um now, as part of the procedures, um it does require planning commission approval uh or recommendation of city council, which was done at October fourth, twenty twenty-three, at their public hearing. There was unanimous support for the commissioners and tenants. It was six members present at that meeting. Um a lot of the commissioners did identify kind of continued support for the uptown, the progress that's been made, the vibrancy that's been with the economic development engine that's occurred, and really making sure that the the decisions and creating clear expectations for property owners does help kind of in turn maintain that progress as well. And then it was noticed to um all uptown properties, as well as those seven hundred feet from it and posted in the news mirror. No written responses were received, but we did receive some calls for people just asking questions. And then I, as I noted before, there was a following edit from the planning commission review, which specifies Yucapai Boulevard will have a commercial component with any residential project, just to make sure that we're not losing that prime space um just strictly for residential project. So a photo from the last music, um I think this is from Autumn Fest. And so certainly you can see there's a lot of life, a lot of activity, a lot of joy um with how the uptown has progressed, and we'll make sure that continues. And so the recommendation is that city council conduct a public hearing, consider the planning commission's recommendation to adopt the amendment to the uptown business district specific plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. Questions of staff? I do have a public comment? Dr. Wong? This one's actually better. The penmanship on this one's better than the penmanship on this one.
That's because I wrote it earlier. The last one, I had to run over there and fill it out. And I didn't need to do that because he was way ahead of me. So anyway, um Hanson Wong, three five one five zero Court Street, Yucapai, California. It's getting so late, I'm not sure I remember who I am anymore. So. So, you know, the city planner and staff need to be commended for all the work that they put into the upper Yucapahai area. I mean, it goes through such detail in the planning and stuff that it talks about what to do with the facades and which trees we should plant and how it would make it aesthetically pleasing and so on. I only have two comments and only really one concern. One of them is, I'm sure they have it so that as we grow in that area, so does the parking area because again, we don't wanna make it so the people are just driving around and around finding parking. But the one area that I do have concern about is we don't have finalized what we expect of the builders in the area for signage. There are some recommendations that I saw in the plans, but I think in order to go along with the nice trees and the nice facade and having the aesthetics, that we need to think, what is it the city wants and the city council wants in the matter of signage? And get it more into what is required rather than what is suggested. Otherwise, once they do it, then basically we're done. We have no recourse. I wanna commend the city council again for the work you do, just like Don and some other people have said because I'll tell you, reading through the four hundred and twenty-four pages, I had to take two naps just to get through it all. So anyway, thank you all.
There is no applicant rebuttal, so I'll close the public hearing. It's nine twenty-two. I'll lead off on council discussion. I think to piggyback on what Dr. Wong said, certainly, city staff and councils of past need to be commended for their vision for the uptown. Our, you know, going back ten plus years, the men and women seated at this dais and at the staff counter have done a phenomenal job of turning our uptown from what was dull and drab into something that can be bragged about to friends and family that live in, outside of our city. So from our prior city manager all the way down to our prior, prior city council members. Dr. Wong hit the nail right on the head on that one. Is there any other questions, comments, or concern of council? Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Thorpe, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Duncan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Are there any announcements?
The turkey trot.
Turkey trot.
Winterfest.
I elected not to mention it at the time during the first public comment. I'll say it now. I don't know that it's altogether appropriate for the city of Yucapahai to become engaged in international politics. We have our own mountain of work ahead of us that we need to focus on. I do think that individual councilmen should, if they feel so inclined, seek out their federal electeds if they want to voice an opinion one way or another regarding the chaos in the Middle East. But I don't think it's altogether appropriate for the city of Yucapahai as an official capacity to become involved in international politics. Shocking though it may be over there. That is all I have to say. Thank you for coming out tonight, folks, and engaging in your city council. I appreciate it. It makes our job easier when the room is full of faces looking at us and helping us along. I will see you at the next city council meeting of November, and until then, be safe and see you then. Adieu.